Good evening. Maybe we could go ahead and get started. Thank you all for coming out to the December 4, 2017 Joint Work Session with the Falls Church City Council, the School Board. We are delighted to welcome some of our newly elected folks here. They're sitting at the table with us, so we've got a full house, and we are happy that everyone's here with us. I don't know, Mr. Webb, if you had anything you wanted to say before we get started?
Just looking forward to getting the ball rolling on a, what I hope to be a very productive budget season and process with the presentations tonight by the superintendent and the city manager.
Sounds good. Well, maybe with that, we should turn it over to Dr. Noonan and Mr. Shields.
Well, good evening, everybody. What we'd like to do tonight is really share information. And so we will have our preliminary revenue forecasts. We'll have our preliminary expenditure cost driver discussion. This is something we traditionally do in early December, late November, so that everybody has the same basis of information as the school administration and the school board begins its budget development, or actually, it's not beginning, it's already underway. And also, as I, working with all of our department directors, put together a set of budget recommendations for the city council in March. March 12th is when we'll present our budgets to the school, to the city council. What I think we'll see in tonight's presentation is that, on the revenue side and on the expense side, this is a pretty normal budget. What is extraordinary about our budgeting is the capital program that we're about to embark on. And that has a big influence on the way we'll look at our operating budget for FY19, which we're planning for and for the years after that. In May, we're planning to issue debt for City Hall, for a portion of the library, for land acquisition for the schools, and for a whole host of other things, and then notably for the architecture and engineering for the high school. It will be one of the largest debt issuances in the city's history, second only to Mary Ellen Henderson. It's what we will issue next May. And that's before we even begin the construction process for the high school. So that constitutes, in terms of FY19 budget planning, the debt service for that May issuance will be about $2.5 million. So keep that figure in your mind as we're going through this presentation, as that is the extraordinary thing that we're working through with our FY19 budget. And at the same time that we're developing the budget, we'll be working through the procurement process to build a new high school, and we'll be working through air procurement process to take 10 acres to market to help us pay for that high school. So it's going to be a very busy spring when we roll up our sleeves and get to work on all of these things. So for tonight's meeting, Ms. Kiran Bawa, our chief financial officer, will provide an overview of the revenues and expenditure forecasts. Michelle Kopic from the schools will present some information on the school projections and cost drivers. We'll both chime in on a couple of points as well, and then we'll have Q and A on that. Following that, we'd like to have a discussion of city fiscal policies, which we would ask for the council to have on its agenda for December 11th. To help with that discussion, we have our financial advisor from Davenport, and Joe Mason and Jennifer are here to provide a presentation on the fiscal policies. And then after that, we plan to have a discussion on budget guidance for FY19. So those are all in your packets, and we look forward to the presentation. So Kiran gets sort of the leadoff for the presentation. You have all the slides at your tables to take notes on, and the intent is to get through all the information and then have Q and A afterwards. If there's a pressing question or clarification, you can raise it. But we're looking forward to a good discussion and Q and A after we've gotten through the data.
Ms. Bawa? Good evening. So as mentioned, we have for you preliminary revenue projections for fiscal year 2018-19, main components of what drives the cost, any increases or changes for fiscal year 19 on the school side, as well as the general government side. And then the most important piece, the capital funding plan, looking at the new debt service that we'll be adding as a result of the fiscal year 18 bond issuance in May that we're projecting, and adding roughly $2.5 million new debt service for next year, and how we have a funding plan that was looked at by council in July. Finally, we'll wrap up with the budget calendar and a quick summary of the key issues that we go through the slides. So overall, I would say that the Falls Church revenues continue to see an upward trend. And overall revenues, we will look at some specific categories and a little bit of aberrations on a couple of the categories. And we are projecting a revenue growth of 3%. If you want to look at it from a range perspective, it's somewhere between 2.5% to 3.5%. And 3% projected growth translates to $2.6 million between the school and the general government in additional revenues for projected for next year. Our primary expenditure needs on both sides, obviously, the main one being the debt service that we, of $2.5 million that needs to be addressed for capital improvement projects. And this is for the full CIP plan that was adopted by council in July. And some facilities, maintenance, and equipment replacement, the pay-as-you-go funds that we have a small amount in budget, however, the need remains for a larger appropriation. Other operating needs, we need to address the interjurisdictional agreements, WAMADA subsidy, and we'll take a deeper look at it in one of the future slides. Projected school enrollment, Dr. Noonan will speak to that. And employee compensation on both ends is a priority for management. A look at the assessed valuation for Falls Church and a couple of the neighboring cities and counties. So for our LinkedIn, overall assessed valuation growth, they are projecting of 3.2% for fiscal year 19. They are seeing, realizing, or projecting a higher growth on their residential side at 3.8%. And Fairfax is about the same, 3.17% overall, and a major portion for them coming from their commercial growth. For Falls Church, we are projecting 3.5% overall assessed valuation growth. And residential, that makes up 70% of our total assessed valuation of a little over $4 billion, is projected to grow, see a market growth of 3.2% and a little less than 1% for market construction, new construction, sorry. And commercial, an overall growth of 2%, 2.6%, and most of it coming from market growth. We are low on the new construction growth for next fiscal year. So this pie chart shows a breakdown of the revenue categories. For fiscal year 18, total revenues are budgeted at $87.4 million. Three-fifths of it is driven by real estate taxes, 61%. Personal property tax, sales tax, and meals tax, those are the three key revenue trend indicators for us at Falls Church, so they make up about 15% of the total revenue budget. And the remaining business license tax and other recordation taxes, license and permits make up for the rest, almost 20% of the budget. And we'll look at the three key indicators shortly. Here is real estate tax rates in the region. This is, data is for 2016, and Falls Church is somewhere in the middle realm of that comparative data for larger cities, as well as smaller cities, as you may see. A look at, the next slide shows a look at the revenue projections for the three key revenue category indicators for us. So personal property tax, for the first four months of fiscal year 18, the actuals show that we have done better by about 7% than the budget for the first four months. And then, keeping in mind the 10-year and the three-year averages, we're projecting an increase of 6%. As we had seen, we have added close to 150 cars in this year, and most of the billing for this happens upfront, so we have a good assessment of where the year is headed. Sales tax, on the other hand, did very well in 2017. We saw a growth of 9.4% for the year. However, in 2018 was left flat because year-over-year, there wasn't, there was actually a decrease. And in the first four months of this year compared to the first four months of last fiscal year, we're actually seeing a decrease of 4% in the sales tax. We do realize that there will be revenue from possibly Target and Aldi that open up later. However, already seeing, you know, a negative 4% year-over-year, we're projecting to keep it flat for budget for next year. Meals tax, the budget for fiscal year 18 was budgeted at 5% growth over fiscal year 17, and first quarter showed a 4.1% increase in actuals over budget, so keeping that in mind and in the same line, along with the three-year and 10-year averages, kind of keeping it at 4.2%, 4% projection for next year. So in a nutshell, overall revenue forecasts for Falls Church would be total revenue growth of 3% for general fund, assessed values at 3.5% overall, and other revenues, 1%, which also include the permits and fees and business licenses. As a lot of the delinquencies got collected this year, we're not expecting that rate of collection even so. Deeper look at the various categories, other revenues would see a 1% growth for an overall growth of 3%, which equals $2.6 million. So this is a recap, and you've seen this before. This is a recap of the three-year, five-year, and seven-year averages for school transfer and the general government, and the revenue growth, organic, in other words, revenue growth minus any increment that supported the operating. So you'll notice the five-year averages are some of the highest ones, and those primarily because within the last five years, we have done a lot of kickstart to make up for the slowdown in the economy. I think in 2011 and 2010 that we saw the depressed numbers at that time. So looking ahead, what are some of the key areas that we need to address on the general government side, the cost drivers? On the retirement, retirement contribution rate dropped for the city due to a good performance year for us, from little less than 9% to almost 5%. So this would save us about, roughly about $400,000 in retirement contribution costs for the city. Health insurance is projected to grow at roughly 10%, requiring $200,000 increase. WAMADA, so 2018 contribution for the city was $3.3 million. And the two pieces for the operating side, WAMADA is proposing that they would not have any more than 3% increase in local subsidy, and Falls Church in that chart is at 2.3%, which means about $65,000 more for us to contribute on the operating side. However, most of the increment, the remaining $400,000 is for the capital contribution, and that is among, across the board for all jurisdictions. And for us, it's going up by roughly $430,000. That's the projection. These are very preliminary numbers from their first projection that they shared with the region. More refined numbers are expected in the next month or two, and WAMADA expects to adopt their budget in March 2018. So we'll have the numbers in time for our adoption, maybe not in time for the preliminary. I will turn it over to Dr. Noonan, and then we'll revisit the capital plan after that.
Thank you, Ms. Bawa. Good evening, everybody, and thank you very much for allowing us to be here tonight and working alongside through this budget process. This, of course, is our hour. My partner here, Michelle Kopic, and my first foray into the budget with all of you, and we're excited tonight to share some information that we have to sort of put in context what we're looking at in terms of some of those, same, similar cost drivers to what the city is experiencing, so the general government side. So with that, I'll turn it over to Michelle, and I will be right here.
Good evening, everyone. So as you can see from our student enrollment information, that our FY18 number where we're sitting at as of September 30th was 2,678 students. So we had a natural growth of only eight students for this year, but we are expected and projected to grow by another 63 students next year. And I think you need to put those numbers into context, which we're going to do next, as we are looking at the history of the growth, because we have years that go up, we have years that go down. As you can see here, though, the green bars are our historical enrollment numbers, those are our actual numbers, and then the red bars are showing our projected numbers as we work with Weldon Cooper on those numbers. And historically, we see some years where we have a great jump, and then there are other years that we stay flat. But overall, that general trend line is increasing, and we have no reason to believe that that's going to change, even though this year's growth was a little bit lower than we had anticipated. If you look at the next slide, you can see here, again, we have the, blue line is the projected numbers, where the pink line is the actual numbers. And we've seen times in history below, before, where our growth greatly outpaced the projection, and then when the projections outpaced our growth. When that happens, as you can see on the left side of the slide, there's a couple of years where the projection program, it kind of takes a little while for it to smooth back out. And then we have a number of years where the numbers are really tight, they're very predictable. In FY15, we had a big discrepancy between projection, projected and actual, and now, just like we'd seen before, we're narrowing that. We have every reason to believe that that, the projection and the actuals are going to tighten back up again, so we want to be watching the trend line. We don't want to look at individual years, we really need to be looking at the trend line in general. This next slide is not very interesting, but there's a key component that we want to share about this tonight, and that is that large blue portion of the pie, almost 85% of the pie of our expenses, those are our people, mainly our teachers. About 90% of our salary and benefits budget are directly in the schools. They are the staff that are directly impacting our students. So we are a labor-intensive operation, so we always want to make sure that we recognize, you know, we can tighten our belt, and we can try to do as good a job as we can with efficiencies, we can try to find ways to trim, but to make a significant impact on our budget numbers, it's going to come down to people. And when 90% of your people are impacting the classroom, it's going to impact the classroom. So all of us are going to do everything we can, but that is a reality that we face. So our mandatory cost drivers that we're looking at, we're also going to see some relief in the VRS. The rate went down due to good performance, as Kiran had also indicated, so we will see some cost savings there. Our health insurance provider has given us a 15% increase number. We are hopeful that that was an overly conservative estimate. We will have the exact number by February before we need to present the final numbers, and we can hope that that will come down a little bit, but we are following the guidance we'd been given. The number of our employees that also participate in the city retirement plan, they're seeing that same reduction on the city retirement, a minor line there for other benefits. And then our big cost driver is our enrollment growth, that 63 students that we're anticipating for the next year. In order to meet the needs of our current students and the enrollment growth that anticipated, we are expecting a need of another 4.5 positions, 4.5 FTEs, and that is approximately $500,000. And at that point, I'm going to turn this over to Dr. Noonan.
Thank you, Ms. Kopic. Just a couple of other things that I want to call your attention to, just that become other drivers for us as we think about the school budget going into FY19. The first is providing and maintaining a competitive salary with our staff. As I think everybody in the room knows, for the last several years, there's been a concerted effort to create a salary scale that is consistent with our neighbors to the east, otherwise known as Arlington, to ultimately get within 3% of where Arlington's budget is. And to date, the staff and through the work of the school board and with the support of the city council have been able to get very close to that 3% piece. So in order for us to maintain a competitive posture with Arlington, we would need to offer some sort of compensation for our staff. And what we put in this presentation this evening is just what the cost would be. So for example, a 1% cost of living adjustment would be in the neighborhood of about $395,000. A step increase for our employees is about 2.5% because we are on a salary and lanes program, so a step increase is just north of $1 million for that step. Another contextual piece to that that I think is important to note also is that recently I had an opportunity to attend the governor's conference down at the University of Virginia studying the national teacher shortage, and Virginia is not immune to the national teacher shortage. We are experiencing significant positional issues specifically to special education, mathematics, and science. So any way that we can maintain a competitive posture in the marketplace to attract really great people to the city of Falls Church, we want to make sure that we do that. The next is additional program enhancements, any kind of additional things that we would be looking at, and I want to tie that sort of together with those adequate classroom materials and supplies. We have a growing number of students that are coming to us with need, whether it's English language learning, we have more students that are coming to us that have, that are coming from poverty, more students that are coming to us that have experienced some trauma, and each of those require a specific approach to learning. And those program enhancements to meet the needs of all students are going to require some additional resources. And then lastly, enhancing and updating our technology and software that our students are using and our, and our teachers are using on a routine basis. So those are, those are some additional cost drivers to consider, that we are considering as we are working through our budget. So at this time, I'll turn it back to Ms. Bawa.
The next slide might look familiar. This is the full CIP adopted by council. Is that better? So this is the full CIP debt service as a result of the full CIP that was adopted by council on July 24th earlier this year. Just a quick recap, this blue portion is the existing debt service on the projects that are underway. This red portion is the George Mason High School debt service. This orange portion is the Thomas Jefferson projected, this is outside our current CIP of fiscal year 18 to '22. However, we're just put up placeholders, starting a debt service in '26. And this blue piece is ongoing CIP needs of $5 million every other year, debt service for that. And these bunch is the library, the city hall, the acquisition, park acquisition, land acquisition, and other miscellaneous small projects on the general government side that include the Larry Graves turf, the firearm upgrades at Fairfax, and the fire station. I think there is also the vehicle acquisition, so that. And then this line is the city's 12% debt expenditure, debt-to-expenditure policy, as you will see. We will have a discussion, as mentioned, on the policy right after this. This is just an all. So I want to bring your attention, as part of the fiscal year 19 budget, to this piece above this blue line. This is $2.5 million, which is the new debt service that we're adding on, and we need to address as part of the fiscal year 19 budget. This slide shows the impact of the new debt on the median homeowner, house averaging $700,000 cost. The blue line is the impact without the land sale of the 10 acres, either the lease or the sale, and it would impact an increment of $900 to as much as $1,300 over the years for that scenario. And assuming that we have land sale proceeds at $40 million, and as used in the model with the anticipated or projected interest rates, it would mitigate the effect down to six cents and showing a decrease based on the land sale proceeds over the years and coming down over the 20-year span that shows in this chart. That was background, just to get everybody to the spot that how, we need to have a CIP financing plan, and this was visited as part of the full CIP as voted by council. So have a discussion maybe on this afterwards, on the steps that we need to take to get there. First bond issuance is projected in May 2018, approximately $32 million. It is one of the largest issuances for the city. That has typically seen issuances in the amount of $10 million or so range, and this would include the George Mason High School, library upgrades, city hall, public safety project, miscellaneous general government CIP projects, including the land acquisition and the Larry Turf, Graves' turf field. So new debt service would start in fiscal year 19, requiring an increase of six cents to address that over a period of time, and the next slide will, will go deeper into that number. The intent is, bless you, the intent is to continue to build our reserves in such a way so that the impact, the tax increase impact is smooth over the years for the taxpayers, and we don't see peaks of it. And the peaks make it tend to go higher, so we'll see in the, and then in addition, we want to be able to have a policy in place that supports 15% to 20% available fund balance revision that you will see in the, as part of the next item. So pardon me for this busy slide, but we'll walk through it. So let's, I'll draw your attention to three lines, rows. The first one, that's the new debt service that we're adding each of the years. We're looking at a five-year scenario. And the drawdown on the capital reserves, that's going to happen in each of those years, and then the remaining capital reserve balance after looking at the other factors. So just looking at it for fiscal year 19, new debt service of $2.59. And how do we pay for it? The council has taken two actions. One was the 2018 one-and-a-half cent increase, that'll help us partially, and another cent and a half from return on investment from the water proceeds that went towards the pension. That was another council action that was taken a year, a couple of years ago. And, and this line shows the drawdown of the capital reserves over the years. As you will see, for year two and year three, fiscal year '20 and '21 together, it's roughly $10.3 million needed to address the, to drawdown from the capital reserve in order to help address. address the large, the debt services growing larger over the years. So in order to afford this in second and third year, it is important that we are able to put some sort of funding in the capital reserve to afford these large drawdowns for reserve and smooth this increase. The other way of looking at it is if we did not put this money in the reserve, and we just did a three and a half or four cent increase this year, this year would require that if you took six and a half, 6.6, and took 1.2 out of that, the 5.4 million to address that debt service, it would require a much larger increment than just six cents that we tried to smooth over these years. And then, once we realize the 15 million, the first tranche of the land sale proceeds, projecting on our model, a two-cent decrease. And both of these here, it results in an increment of $408, in addition to any increments as based of the market growth in the assessed valuation for next fiscal year. This should be, this is projected impact to the homeowners with roughly 700,000 house value and dropping down to $300 three years from now. And I'd like to bring your attention to this. Should we choose to put any less than, increase the impact any less than $6, six cents, sorry, six cents. Thanks for the correction, six cents. We would be dipping down into our reserves. Even with this, we are going less than 1 million, but anything less than that would have a higher impact on the taxes to make sure that we don't dip further down into our reserves. I'm thinking there'll be questions at the end. So budget calendar, December 11th, next Monday, council will take action on budget guidance based on the guidance we get, the city as well as the school. We will, the school superintendent will present a proposed budget to their board on January 9th. Capital improvement program presentation to planning commission in first week of February. And the school board is expected to adopt their budget on February 20th and make their recommendations to the city, which will factor into the city manager's budget presentation of the proposed budget on March 12th. And with two hearings and at least a few town halls and community meetings, we are hoping to have an adopted budget by April 23rd, the second reading of the ordinance by that time. So again, in summary, as mentioned at the start, the revenues continue to see upward trend barring any major fluctuations or adjustments in the economy. And we'll obviously have to address those as they come. Other than that, the bigger issue for us is the increments and the adjustments that we need to make in order to address our capital program that was adopted, needing 145 million within the next, as part of the next five years. And we need to set our policies in alliance with that so that we have a proposed budget based on the policy direction that we get from council. With that, I'd like to conclude my presentation and open the floor for questions.
Okay, thank you for the very thorough presentation. I imagine there are a fair amount of questions. Does anyone want to start with the first question? No questions? All right. Ms. Hardy?
Question for both schools and general government, health insurance numbers. So we've been surprised in the past with health insurance premium increases. Are those numbers locked in this time around, or do we anticipate any risk with those numbers?
From the school side, we are not locked in. The risk that we're experiencing is that they potentially are a little conservative, so they could actually help us down the line. Our advisor from our healthcare company offered us a 15% number, and primarily that's because schools are always more expensive to insure than other government agencies.
And we would just remind everybody, we share the same insurance, health insurance policy holder, we do that together. And so whatever the percentage increase for the schools will be, it'll be the same for us. And so there is risk on that, that's an early number.
My second question has to do with the enrollment growth. Given that we pretty much had flat enrollment, 0.3%, and I know that we've talked about the trends being, you know, sometimes we're up, sometimes we're down, but I don't think we've ever actually seen a flat year. And given that, like you mentioned, 85% of our school costs are driven from enrollment, do we have a sense of root cause of that kind of flat enrollment? And I know that it moderates, well, the Cooper's projections for the next future years, given that they're seeing some slowdown. But I'm just curious whether we understand the root cause yet, and therefore understand how my class sizes have changed this year, and whether we see any underspending from much lower enrollment growth this year as a result of that.
We don't have root cause analysis of that yet. We have started to identify within the data set where, for example, what grade levels were experiencing some loss. But with respect to your question about underspending, because of the way schools are funded, we purchase a year in advance the services that we're going to need. So I think while it won't help us this fiscal year, there's a potential that it could help us in this next fiscal year. For example, this last year, we did hire an additional kindergarten teacher and an additional paraprofessional, which benefited our kids at Mount Daniel immensely because they got nice, small classes. But it's also a cost that we won't need to incur this coming fiscal year because we saw some lower numbers.
And then a question from Ms. Bawa on tax rate modeling on Slide 20. So I know it's proposed as kind of the six cents for FY '19. Do we have a version where we do more of a ramp up, so instead of six cents, right, this coming year, we do a two cents this year, three cents next year, and so on?
So a ramp up would mean, two cents this year would mean, or three cents this year to just address the current debt service increment for this year or fiscal year '19 would mean close to a double-digit increase in cents for the next, the following year, that's fiscal year '20.
So there's no way where you can add up, break the six cents down into multiple years?
It will have to see peaks and troughs to make up for any increment that you're not going to see or not going to implement in fiscal year '19. And build the reserve, we're going to have to make up for it with more than expected increments in fiscal year '20 and '21. Until the first batch of the land sale proceeds hits, we are, even with smoothing it, we're seeing the reserves drop to less than 1 million in fiscal year '21.
And the last question for now is for the city manager. So for the debt issuance plan for this coming May, we talked about city hall, land acquisitions, A&E for George Mason, and then library was in there. I thought we were doing some sort of sequencing where city hall was going first, plus the A&E, and then the library would maybe be the following year, given that we haven't even seen the updated plans for where the library is yet.
Well, the current capital's plan does call for the major expenditure for the library to be in FY '19. And so we would need those funds at the end of this fiscal year if we're going to stick to that schedule.
So it's really not sequenced then?
Well, that is the sequence. I mean, it's, A, it's there in design this year and construction was going to be next year. That's what's in the adopted CIP.
So there's going to be more library debt the following year? Are we taking all 8 million of it out this year?
The plan is to...
So we do 1 million?
This year, and then the remaining 7 million next year. And that'll be brought up as for part of the fiscal year '19 to '23 CIP when that comes.
It's not all 8 million for the library this year? Okay, thank you. That's it for...
Mr. Z?
Thank you, Mayor. With respect to the enrollment growth, I know every year you do this balancing act between what you reject for enrollment, whether it's positive or flat or marginal. And then you also balance that against your teaching staff that some people leave, you add some people. Can you explain again what that relationship is? That is to say, when you know the enrollment would occur, and how much you actually hold back to what teachers leaving to meet that need? I know there's a little bit of margin here that we're talking about.
Yeah, it's a very tight margin, Mr. Z, in that in order for us to maintain competitiveness and get the very best teachers that we can, we can't really wait until July or August to hire. So we do try to early hire as much as we possibly can to make sure we have the best and brightest in the City of Falls Church. So we, this year, for example, just given the last example of the kindergarten para and the kindergarten teacher, we did hire that teacher early. The enrollment didn't come in, and we did not pull that teacher from the classroom or from the school at that point. But we also won't hire for that position this coming year. So in essence, it was an early hire, maybe a year early in this particular case. But to your point, one of the things that we do look in the future to as we continue to grow in enrollment is to potentially look at our staffing standards, identify if there's a possibility of doing some sort of staffing reserve, if you will, so that we could add positions as time goes by. But again, when you do that, what you end up doing as a school system is putting yourself in a position where you're hiring at the last minute. And I think that that leads to some potential issues down the line.
So your subtext that I thought I heard earlier was that you would have key positions in math and science and those kinds of things. So you would want to, I assume, fortify those positions early rather than later. Is that correct?
That's absolutely correct.
Thank you. The other question I have since we're on Slide 20, if you could explain to me this alarming number of $712,000. That's about above guidance policy, or is that just, is that the net? And can you perhaps, you could explain that in the context of Slide 17?
So I should mention, these numbers are in thousands. So it's 712,000?
I know that. Same thing.
So yes, the reserve would fall below 1 million in that year, even with the smoothing off the real estate tax increment of six cents, starting with July.
Can you go to Slide 17?
Sure.
And show me what that looks like.
So this is debt service.
Okay.
Did you mean the next slide?
Yes, yes.
So maybe I'll show it here. If we were to do...
Can you come here? I just had a problem, you can't see that.
Okay, so if, where is it? Oh, yeah. Turn this light up. So if we, if the increment was any less than six cents here, say half of it, three cents, the next year, the following year, fiscal year '20, the six cents will not be enough to address the 7 million debt service. It would have to go much higher to about, I would say, double-digit numbers.
Eight or nine or 10?
So it's 6.6 million minus 1.2, which is roughly 5.4 million divided by 400,000, so which is about 12 to 13 cents, which is a high number, very high number.
Okay, and the following question then is, in the following, you're going back to...
Slide 20.
Slide 21 again. Let's sit here a second here. So this assumes that we do sell the land in 2022, that you get a 15 million enrichment. And the obvious question is, if that doesn't happen, what does your profile look like then?
So...
It might be dropping to four cents. I presume it would be, you would need to maintain, well, I guess that's a question. What would you need to, what would you need if the 15 million weren't realized?
If the 15 million were not realized from the land sale proceeds in fiscal year '22, it would need to be addressed as part of the real estate tax increase.
You need the 7 million...
And it will go back to that. We'll have to catch up with that blue line in the other chart. Sorry, we're toggling between slides here. So we'd have to catch up with this blue line, which is an impact to the homeowners without the land sale proceeds. And these numbers include some modeling based on the economic development modeling, some tax yields starting in the fiscal year, as we had discussed, looking at these numbers. So these were provided as part of the full CIP adoption by council in July.
So would it be fair to then characterize the blue line as worst case and the red line as best case optimized?
Correct.
Yeah, the blue line is if there is no, if there is no land transaction. And the red, the red case is a reasonable planning scenario that we think we can accomplish.
So my particular question was, if you don't get the six cents and the land sale doesn't occur, then there would be, I guess, a purple line in between somewhere there that is between those two extremes. Would that be correct?
No, in any event, if the land sale doesn't happen, we're up at the blue line.
And to catch up, the purple line would be above the blue line because you're starting at six cents, you're not starting at 13 cents.
Yeah, so it's key, at year one, we're assuming the land transaction's going to happen. So the purple line scenario that you're talking about is above the blue line because we'd need to catch up. Because even, because every year that we're not up at the blue line, then we need to make that money up because we're now behind, if you follow me.
Okay, thank you.
Can I just jump in really quickly? I think a key risk mitigation we've been talking about in the financing part of this is that the land transaction doesn't happen, we wouldn't be issuing this massive amount of debt, and we'd probably be pausing the school construction timeline.
That's true, absolutely.
Mr. Mayor?
Of course.
Thank you.
So the first thing I need to understand on your $712,000 figure, when you say that is, you know, the reserves, are you talking about funds that are now described as the unassigned fund balance, or is this what would be left in the capital reserves?
This is strictly capital reserve.
So in other words, we'd still have 14.8 million or thereabouts in the unassigned fund balance, and an additional 712,000 in the capital reserves.
Should all else remain sane.
Okay. All right, well, first, I guess, I guess I'd been under the impression that we were devoting the capital reserves to this project, and there would be no need to hold an additional reserve in the capital reserve. But that's something that we can, others can discuss further. Back to, back to the chart that shows the three, five, and seven-year... Yes. You know, the chart that I'm pointing to here. So, there you go. So as Dr. Noonan, you know, explained there, the persistent problem that we have year in and year out is the misalignment of the budget year and the, when do we know the enrollment number year? The when do we know the enrollment number drives your hiring and therefore almost all your costs. And we don't know that number when we pass the budget in April. So we are trying to, I think, in conversations with some of y'all, come up with an approach that takes a longer view, as he said. One year is not meaningful, even though it's pretty extraordinary for the enrollment growth to be flat. Still, let's set that aside and say that's probably not going to be typical. So the purpose of this chart is to at least show, you know, between the schools and the general government, what we've been increasing over three, five, seven years. How does that match up with the enrollment numbers going back, say, to seven years? Have we kept track, have we kept pace with in the school transfer enrollment growth over the past seven years?
Go all the way to the end. We have a backup slide that we'd like to share with you that sort of hits, gets to that question, I think. That's it. And let me sort of illustrate it for you, give you a sense of what it looks like. So this is percent change over time. This is percent change over time. This is percent change over time going back to FY07. So, here, the blue line is student enrollment. So, percent change over time in student enrollment from FY07 to FY17 is at 37%. However, the spending per student is the pink line, and it has fluctuated from anywhere from 8% at the high in FY17 back to another peak at FY09 at 5%, down to a negative 9% in FY12. And then the yellow line indicates the city dollars, percent, general government dollars spent per student. So, you'll see that those are also, they, they track, but they are not exactly even. So, getting to your point of percent change is, we have gone significantly up in enrollment, and in, in the estimation of some, some maybe haven't kept pace with that.
Just, that's helpful. Just eyeballing the tail end of that chart then, over the last, say, three years, what has our track record been in terms of keeping pace with enrollment as it was three years ago compared to now?
I'm not sure I understand the question.
Bring that blue line down and just... Yeah, I'm, I'm just talking about the growth, yeah. I'm not talking about the, the, the growth from seven to three years ago.
So, 8%, 29 to 37 is an 8%.
Okay, and...
And 6% to 8% is a 2% growth.
Okay, and in the same time, be helpful to know that cities' population growth and how general governments' operating costs have changed in that time too. Not right now, but that would be useful to know. And it's, like, just one other question. In addition to the suggestion that you made, Dr. Noonan, about some sort of reserve for hiring or whatever, you have any other suggestions about how to deal with that misalignment of, you know, your hiring year and our budget year? So that we try to, you know, not have these great variances in growth and operating. We'd like, I think, we'd all like, even if it requires us to, you know, generate more revenues through growth and/or taxation, we'd like to keep the, you know, enrollment and the operating numbers, they don't have to be, you know, equal, because at some point you achieve economies of scale, I trust, if we get a little bit bigger. But still, we would like them not to get far out of whack. Do you have any suggestions about how we deal with this? Some sort of multi-year, you know, way of budgeting that, that takes us away from, you know, fighting this out over the next four months, you know, every calendar year, every budget year?
I have some more short-term ideas. As we can, we just hired a new director of human resources who is helping us sort of think through some of these things, because I do recognize that there is some bouncing. So, so one of the things that we are looking at in the near term is looking at potentially doing some early hiring this spring for some of those critical need areas that you suggested, special ed, mathematics, science, and the like. But making sure that we have hired people that are flexible enough. So, if the enrollment doesn't grow, come in, for example, at the high school, but it does come in at the middle school, they may be able to move. So, in the end, what we would be doing would be providing a contract to guarantee you a position, but where that position might be isn't, isn't guaranteed. That does, that's a short-term beginning solution to start thinking about how we can look at this in the longer term. Some of the other issues that I think that we, that we face, and, and these are bigger, broader issues that we're working with the state on from a legislative perspective too, is just teacher licensure and how people are licensed to become teachers. There are some narrow bands of positions that are, you know, staff is very, very difficult to find. So, when you do, you kind of have to pounce. That doesn't help us in the long term, but if the state is, is helpful with licensing people, it gives us a little bit more flexibility in the school systems as well, maybe not immediately, but down the line in helping mitigate some of these issues as well. So, we'll continue to, continue to look for ways. You know, the, the bottom line is, as we went back and looked, well, bottom line for me, anyway, is we went back and looked at the Weldon Cooper projections for the last 10 years, and they're all within 2%. So, you know, we can only deal with the data that we have, but I feel like a 2% margin of error is not too bad. Can I invite Michelle up to ask, or can, you need the mic?
The...
Yeah.
Three council members that had brought up the, you know, the issue that we really did have flat enrollment this year. And it's not typical, but it is also not heard of, and I think in a previous slide, we've actually had one year within the last 12 where we had a reduction in enrollment from year to year. And we can just look at that general trend line, though, and I think that that is one of the components we were trying to point out, that when, when we do get misaligned with our projections, even though we might not be able to pinpoint a causality, history does show us that those Weldon Cooper numbers, we're going to bounce around those a little bit and then come back into alignment. And it, it would be great to have that causality. But I, I do think that there is some history to look back on, saying that we can trust in that general trend line upward, even with flat enrollment this year. We saw negative enrollment growth back in the mid 2000s and then, but then it just trended back up again. So, I think there's reason to have confidence in those projections.
Thank you. I'm just, can I just, I'm doing a little, I'm doing a Ms. Hurdy. So, at the very beginning, Ms. Bowe, you said we've earned 2.6 million in additional revenue. And then a few slides...
Projected, if I make it right.
I'm sorry, okay, so the projection. And the, a few slides after that, you said you want at least 2.4 million of that to cover the six cents that we need for the capital program. So, that would tell me that we have $200,000 among us to spend, and if we made no other changes. And is that, I mean, if we're, if we're looking at the, if we're dedicating the revenue growth to the capital program, which we have committed to.
So...
We are essentially, you know, within a couple hundred thousand dollars is all we have left to spend here.
I'm, I'm looking at your revenue growth as an factor for your operating budget. And any increments or changes or debt service that needs to be made on a, for the capital piece needs to be addressed. Also, however, it's, it's definitely a policy decision. Would we use our operating increment to address our capital needs, or would there be a separate increment? This is a policy decision for the council.
And so, when we get to the budget guidance statement, the way that the draft has been phrased and the way I, you know, I'm presenting it to you is that in the past, the council has said something along the lines of, build your budget so that a tax rate increase is not needed for operations. This year, it's phrased in a different way, which would say, build your budget so that expenditures do not exceed X% of FY18 relative to FY18. So, that allows the council, it's phrased that way so that the council can weigh in on, at the beginning, on this decision. Our planning all the way up to this point has been economic growth would pay for operating, and, and the CIP would be done through the tax rate. But the council will have the opportunity to have that discussion, and, and the way that the budget guidance has been drafted, you can set the direction on that. Or you can phrase it in a different way, but that would be the, the way that the council can get at it.
Could I then ask for a very simple layout of these key numbers? You've got the projected revenue increase. So, if we take the projected recommended CIP funding increase and operating for the schools and city, what does that number look like against the 3%, what is it, 2.6 million, right, projected increase without a tax rate? So, what are those numbers, if you just gave them?
So, it's, it's...
I think a lot of the questions have come already.
That's right. So, what the capital program needs, and the way it's been planned out and the way we discussed it last July, and those numbers really haven't, haven't changed, is we need 2.4 million dollars to go to capital in FY19. So, 2.4 million is, is the number. However you get there, that has to be the priority if this capital plan is going to work.
Let's take that as a number. Now, let's have operating from the city and operating from the schools. What are you looking at now?
In terms of...
That you know the increases. Like, we have from the schools, projected, in various projected increases. So, let's get all the numbers on the table with, in one, all I want is one chart that says, here's the projected revenue increase without a tax, without a tax rate. Here's the, the projected capital cost that we have to fund. Here's the projected operating, here's for the schools and projected operating for the city, to the extent that you all can tell us right now. So, we know what, what is the, the macro picture here, if you will, within our micro budget.
Okay, well, so the, but the bad news about those, I think, with those preliminary numbers is, is that the operating budget would need a tax rate increase, then you'd need six cents on top of that. So, but, but that's, but that's early in the process.
Now, what did you just say? Because I want, I want to get these numbers out right now, so I've got some basis of figuring out, you know, what, what things look like right now.
Well, we can give a crack at it. We've got the numbers and slides here. Do you want to start with the, with the schools?
No, go right ahead.
Well, so, so what we had laid out... So, what we've looked at on, on the general government side, we have good news on the retirement, health insurance, that's a 10% projection, we perhaps should be using a 15%, but let's use that number, 500 for Womata, 300 for pay-as-you-go, and I would anticipate $600,000 to do compensation in a way that will be competitive with what our surrounding jurisdictions is going to do, which, which would be 3% is what our early information is, is what everybody around us is going to be doing on compensation.
So, total of numbers?
That's, that's a total of 1.2 million for the city side.
If you do 3%, cola.
So, and you have the 400,000 relief for the retirement? Minus, yeah, it's a negative.
All right, well, I'll let somebody else, I'll let Ms. Gill do the math for me, too. We, we had in projected cost drivers, and I'm going to try to... Okay, I'm having a hard time seeing, so, there we go.
Just use the page up and down, that's probably easier.
Okay, so, we had a reduction in the Virginia retirement system here, which is good news for us, but our health insurance costs going up by 470, looking at a city retirement benefit as well, some other benefits, and then enrollment growth. So, we're looking at about $707,000 for semi-fixed costs. And then we were looking at other drivers, which would be a step increase, a cola of some percent, any kind of program enhancements and opportunities to upgrade some of the technology. It's very early for me to, to suggest whether we're going to do a step and a cola, at what percent, et cetera. But I do, I do believe that compensation for our employees is a, a significant driver of some decision-making for us. So, if I were to put out, just, just putting it out to say a step and a 2% cola, that would be about 1.8 million, plus the 770 from the slide before, plus some money from, for some program enhancement.
What number did we use when we were putting this out to the public as far as operating costs? Didn't we use the number 2.5% when we were presenting potential operating budget increases?
I shared a 10-year trend of 4% year over year.
I got that, but I thought we came back. I don't know, Mr. Shields, did your presentation have 2.5%?
It was characterized that, that way, and, and some third-party commentary on it. The 2.5 was simply a 10-year average of what AV increases in the City of Falls Church. And so, that's what we have built into our capital planning. We weren't making any statements about what operating budgets would grow with that 2.45 number.
I guess, if you can go back to slide nine, and I want to get to you, Mr. Lichtenhouse. If you can go back to slide nine, just briefly. I mean, I guess, you can't probably see this very well, but it looks like our revenue, organic revenue growth is about 3%, but our spending for three years, five years, and seven years is significantly higher than that. I might just, with this major endeavor we're about to undertake, we've really got to get our operating budgets under control, and I, I know it's early in the game, but I, I think that's a message that we all ought to have some fiscal discipline, certainly for the next couple of years, to swallow this big pill we're about to undertake, but it may be a little ahead of us. Mr. Lichtenhouse, did you have something you wanted to...
Just a couple of quick questions. It'd be very helpful, at least for me, if this exists, but is there a consolidated, comprehensive kind of look back in terms of what we projected we would have from a revenue perspective, what we actually brought in, and then in terms of what we budgeted from an expenditure standpoint, and then what we actually expended for that particular fiscal year? Is there a five-year kind of comprehensive look back? So, when you look at this in the context of what we projected and what, what actually happened, I guess it's, it's helpful in terms of, of making decisions. Is that, do we have that? Does that exist somewhere?
It definitely exists. It has not been sort of put into a consolidated look. Every year, there's a year-end financial report, so we look at our performance, and we talk about it very publicly. But looking at it aggregated to take five years and sort of see what, what the trends are on that, we've not done that.
Is that something that we could, that we could get? That could be pulled together pretty easily?
I mean, yeah, all the data's readily available.
Yeah, that'd be, it'd be helpful for me. And then a question from a revenue perspective. Is there any exposure from a state and local, or state and federal perspective? Because I see that makes up 5% of our revenue. Do we have any exposure in terms of what we expect to come in? I mean, are there any indications that we may not get, whatever that contribution is?
May I? We have some, but very preliminary indication, our state aid on transportation and gas tax. So, those, those are moving variables for us. We do not know for sure if it is going to be fully funded at the levels for fiscal year 17 or fiscal year 18. So, that, that is a wild card also.
Has it been a problem in the past where we've expected a certain percentage and it just didn't materialize? Oh, four?
No floor on the gas tax.
Okay. And then, my last question related to the, to the land sale proceeds. You guys trunched the, the land sale proceeds with the first 15 million coming in 2022. Where did that assumption come from?
That comes from a, an assumption that to get real money, that we can actually spend the land that needs to be done after the high school is built. Now, we may do better than that, but we've believed from a financial planning perspective, that's the right way to plan it.
Because our, the high school project delivers, what, June of 2021, correct? So, I would imagine we would have already had the deal inked with the developer and whatever that...
Yeah, the deal will be inked with the developer before we issue the construction bond. So, May, you know, May 2019 is when we're supposed to have the deal inked. We will work in every respect to have a hard payment in May 2019. That's unusual in commercial real estate, to have a hard payment two years before the land is usable by the buyer. And so, taking a sort of a plain vanilla, commercial real estate approach, we put that payment out to where it shows up in, in the model as you described. Now, as I said, we're going to work to try to bring that money forward, but we've modeled it the way, the way you see it.
Okay, and that's, that's assuming just an outright sale. We haven't contemplated how potential ground lease that might start earlier, or financed land acquisition that might start earlier to offset some of the debt service. We don't have a separate analysis for that?
Well, this is, this assumes a lease with payments upfront for that lease, as opposed to a stream of payments over a very long period of time.
This is assuming a ground lease for that property?
It is.
The 15 million?
And essentially, the way we're looking at it for modeling purposes is there's no difference between a ground lease and a fee sale. If you, if you assume a very long-term lease and that we structure the lease, that we have the payments upfront.
Is there, is there time between now and when the budget is finalized to work on language provision, deal structure that would affect the budget itself? And I'm asking that from a, a protocol perspective. I don't know. I mean, we, we have, we have to take this assumption between now, and I forget what the timing was, of when we have to finalize the budget later in the spring. Is there time to work on a provision that...
Absolutely.
...accelerates payments to cover some of the debt service?
Well, we'll have done a lot more work on this before April 23rd, when you're asked to adopt the budget. But we will not have a master developer, you know, we will not started the RFP phase of that procurement. We will have gotten through the RFQ phase, so we'll have had a lot of pretty deep engagement with the development community on these issues. And we will be further, significantly further along. And we will be further, significantly further along, but we will, but we will not have any commitments, obviously, by budget adoption time.
What's, what's the RFQ timing?
Be a full year prior to any commitments.
RFQ timing again?
Uh, March.
Okay. So I just think about things like a special taxing district, or if you do a different type of deal structure that accelerates those payments. If we put that out there, I mean, it certainly could change the modeling, I would imagine.
Yeah.
Tax rate impacts.
And we'll, we'll be working hard on all those issues. There is, you know, there, there's going to be a school on that land, and for two years after we've inked the deal. And so it's just a basic question, how much money will we get in May of 2019?
Okay.
Other questions?
Yeah, Mr. Castillo.
Web. Mr. Shields, Ms. Bow, which, what interest rate are you using right now for these projections for borrowing?
We're using phased approach, 3.5% for the first issuance, 4% for the second issuance, and 4.5% for the last.
Okay. Dr. Noonan, with respect to some of Mr. Duncan's questions about hiring, there's the calendar and the fact that spring is hiring season. Could you also talk a little bit about how enrollment growth doesn't necessarily yield a linear increase in budget because of class size? And if you have, you know, 20 children, you can accommodate four before you have to hire a new teacher. Can you talk a little bit about how enrollment growth, class size, and teachers affects that spending profile for the budget?
Sure. I, I think what you're asking, Mr. Castillo, is, is do students come in nice neat boxes? And unfortunately, students don't come in nice neat boxes. And we do have students that come and go, and go out throughout the year, that do end up driving some of our decision-making with respect to our hiring practices. And I, just as a, as an aside, for the good of the group, I did pull some numbers just today with the support of our staff, and looked at the mobility rates of our kids. Not something that we've typically looked at, how many kids come in, how many kids go out. And about 11% of the students that we start the year with, we don't end the year with. So if you think about the, the transiency and transient nature of our community, I think it's pretty, pretty important. So that in and of itself, I think, leads to significant fluctuations in the way that our class sizes are, not just class sizes in classroom, but class sizes by grade, and our school sizes fluctuate year to year. So it does, it's not a linear approach, that's for sure. We're always trying to figure out the best we possibly can. And the worst-case scenario, to be perfectly honest, is when we have 80 second graders, because we want to, we want to staff those second-grade classrooms at 24 or 23. And so you put 23 in one class, 23 in another, 23 in another, suddenly you have, you know, 69 kids, and you got 13 left over, and you got to educate them. That was bad math, I think, but you get, you get the idea. You, you got to educate them, so the only way to educate them is by putting another teacher in there. So suddenly your class sizes drop down to below 20, and there's this big question about why are our class sizes so small? And it's because kids don't come in nice, neat packages of 24 at a time.
And just as a follow-up, one of the problems, it seems to me, with the Weldon Cooper approach is that it seems to resolve, revolve around birth rates as opposed to move-in rates. Mr. Shields, correct me if I'm wrong, I think we're still talking about 1,000-ish houses that are worth less than the land they're sitting on. I know for a while, there was a project to, to track student numbers on a per-house basis. Are we still doing that? So we could sort of see as houses are replaced, what the net effect of that is in terms of, if you have a house that's torn down, do you get X, X number of new, of children on average in those new builds?
We do have a pretty good sense of what the average yield is by house and by type. So for example, when, when we were going through the conversation with respect to the issuance of the, of the bond referendum, what we know is that new construction in high, high-density housing typically yields about 0.17 students per unit. So for every 100 units, you're going to get 17 kids, for example. We know single-family homes, though, tend to yield on a higher rate than that. So we do, we are paying attention to those. We, one of the nice charts that we do get each year, and, and your colleague, Mary Beth Conley, helps put it together, is the student by resident or dwelling unit. So it gives us a chance to sort of begin to identify what that looks like. But I think to your broader question of do we track it one at a time, I don't think that we track it in ways that we potentially could. And I've seen it done before, where, for example, you can geocode kids, and you can, you can track, not chip them, but geocode them, and track them where they go, and, and kind of know where they're living, and then you can get a better sense of, of where our kids are, are. And I think that, that, that requirement, and is something that, that Mr. Shields and I have talked about, is really the work of a, of a full-time demographer.
And just one last question from Mr. Shields. You, you were talking about issuing debt for City Hall. Has there, have there been any bonds issued for City Hall renovation thus far?
Yes, bonds were issued, I think about three years ago, was the first major issuance for it. And so we have still, what is the figure, 11.7 million in, in bonds to issue for the City Hall project. Thanks.
Other question by school members? May I just respond, one other, one other piece? You know, during the bond process, we, we were pretty clear that we would, we would work diligently on the school side to tighten up our belts and, and really be fiscally responsible through this process. And, and I think we're all still very committed to that. I think one of the, one of the fundamental differences between the school side and the general government side, which is worth pointing out again, I think, is just that 84% of our budget goes to people. And when we start talking about tightening our belts or becoming more fiscally conservative, the only way that we can really get there is by elimination of people. And so if, if there's an appetite for us to begin doing that, and looking at class sizes, and perhaps growing in class size, that, that's certainly a conversation that we could entertain. I just don't know that there's political will in the community to think about raising class sizes. And, and in order to keep our folks here in the city, I think it's important to compensate them. So I just wanted to put that out there.
Since Dr. Noonan did it, I'm going to do it, too. So 50% of our budget is personnel, but about 30% of our budget is other uncontrolled costs like inter-jurisdictional agreements over which we have even less latitude, and which do tend to grow at, at a rate higher than what the economy is giving us. And so we all will have, you know, a lot of work to do on this year's budget. But in, in all of our work to date in the Budget and Finance Committee, in our conversations, I think there is a very strong commitment and a very strong recognition that this capital program is extraordinary. And, and it is not really a tenable proposition that we can grow our operating budgets like we're used to. We simply cannot and afford this capital program, at least through the transaction where we know this, this 10-acre is going to pay the way we've modeled it. In, in three years, in four years, we will know that this plan is executed properly, and we can maybe take a deeper breath then. But until that point, I think our operating budget is going to be a, a very rigorous exercise. And I think that's, that's the approach that, that we're all planning to take on this year.
Just a point of clarification, Mr. Shields. I, I think if you, if you go back and you look at the initial bond issuance for George Mason in the 50s, you talked about this being an unprecedentedly large project. I think actually, the Mason project initially was about three times our annual school budget. So I think it, in real terms, was bigger than this one.
Let's just say it's historically, if not unprecedented. Yeah, it's still big.
One other observation is that was a period of growth in the city as well, where a lot of the subdivisions that we see today were being plotted out, and the city's revenues were growing because of that. And I think that's another really important part of the overall picture, is that we need to view this as a, as a period of growth in the city's history as well, as we're taking our commercial properties and having them be used much more efficiently by the private sector and paying much more in taxes than they are today.
Mr. Reinga?
We'll probably put points in response to some of the things Mr. Duncan raised. It, the, the, the small growth this year, I think, is absolutely good news for everybody, because it puts less pressure on us, but it is, it is a little bit of a smoothing phenomenon. So as, as Dr. Noonan indicated, the high degree of transiency that we have actually makes single-year predictions much more difficult, because, you know, as we all know, you know, there's an incident in the Middle East, and our school population grew by 50 kids, which is something that very few other school districts, especially small school districts, have to deal with. But it reminded us that although this year our school growth was relatively flat, last year went up 6%, which was far over what the prediction, prediction was. And we budgeted for a small, a far smaller growth than that. So there's sort of a smoothing phenomenon that occurs over time. And long-term, as Dr. Noonan said, the Weldon Cooper predictions have been actually quite accurate, even if there are variations from year over year. I did, to one other thing, Mr. Duncan said, I did, you know, in a, in a very sort of back-of-the-envelope way, tried to figure out about six months ago, what the growth in expenditures per city resident as compared to city transfer versus student was. And over the last seven or eight years, it was relatively similar in terms of percentages. It's much harder to do for city residents, because we have really strong data on how many students we have, and really weak data on how many residents we've got, at least what I was able to get from the US Census. But we're, I think, going to do a little bit further examination on that to make sure we're keeping spending within line. And certainly, as Dr. Noonan said, I mean, I think we're all committed to being as tight as possible under operational requirements, because we know that the capital program is, in fact, historic, if not impressive.
So, Ms. Bow, when will we know the bond issuance interest rate? Will we know before we pass this budget?
Mr. Mason, we should have some intent, probably not, not by April 23rd, no. We're projecting an issuance by end of May, so that, to... Joe, you want to say anything more to that?
No, I mean, my, my point, I just was curious whether we would know when we pass the budget, because if, if that bond issue is at 4% rather than 3.5%, we need another penny. And so when we look at what the real estate tax rate is going to be to cover this huge project, 6% is sort of the minimum. And I, I want all of you, because I won't be sitting at the table, I want all of you to think about the fact that you don't have, you can, you might need wiggle room if this $32 million unprecedented-sized bond issuance makes people nervous enough that we get closer to 4% than 3.5%. And then the other thing I would just ask is that we have this scenario that we've worked with for some time, and it assumes the land sale in 2022. And some people have suggested that perhaps we could actually accelerate the cash and bring it forward a little bit, and that would be good news for us. But I think that when you are looking at this budget going forward, I think it's also important for you, city council, to think about, what if that $15 million slips a year? Because I think that if you don't want to have a huge shock in that year, that it may be worth looking at, how could you model this scenario to smooth it, to give yourself a little bit of wiggle room in case the interest rate goes up, or in case the land sale slips, so that where there's not a huge shock in 2022? And if we raise it a little bit more and we don't immediately use it, you saw all those other capital projects coming down the line that could be paid for from capital reserves, because this additional money would go into capital reserves. So I would just ask people to think a little bit more conservatively, even if it's a little bit more painful, because I think it's actually beneficial to try to smooth things and give yourself some wiggle room in the long run.
Thank you, Mr. Duncan.
If we borrowed the day, what would we get in the way of an interest rate?
It would depend on whether you're talking about the 20-year or the 30-year, but 20 years, south of 3%, 30 years, shade over, which, both of which are both, are lower than the current planning estimate. However, the Fed raising interest rates, the economy could potentially heat up here again pretty quickly, rates could go up.
Okay, I'm just trying to, any, any dollar figure between shade over 3 and 3.5 is what we projected in terms of annual debt service? What kind of amount of money in dollars are we talking about?
A few hundred.
A few hundred, so maybe a penny on the tax rate?
I don't know what your penny is.
400.
400, 400,000.
Okay, thanks.
The other factor on the interest rate would be how the credit rating agencies view us, our fiscal condition. And the next discussion that we have on our fiscal policies, I think we'll delve a little bit more into it, and what as policy that we set for ourselves to make ourselves fiscally sustainable, and how robust our policies are, and how they view us in order for us to go in the market looking for, you know, selling the bonds. And the interest rates we get, it's market is one factor, and then how the rating agencies rate us, that's the other factor.
Are there any other questions, or should we move on to the next phase of our discussion? Mr. Shields?
Okay, well, I think Ms. Bow gave a good segue for it. And so maybe if we could ask Ms. Dirksen and Mr. Mason to come forward and sit with you, us here at the head of the table? And as they're coming up, let's see how we'll do this chair-wise.
While they're doing that, Mr. Mayor, could I ask?
Of course.
In terms of how you're organizing the meeting, are we going to give budget guidance, give our thoughts on that? After we talk about fiscal policies, so we're going to...
That's, that's the plan, but if you'd love to have a comment, it's intertwined, feel free to make it.
If that's what we plan.
So what we have before the council is a draft amendment to our fiscal policies, and this has been something we've been looking at really for two years. And the council looked at this fairly seriously last fall, and the decision was to allow the planning process to advance, and specifically allowed a referendum to advance before taking formal action to amend the policies. And I think we've used that additional time very well. And what's before the council now, I think, is, is a, is a simpler, and a cleaner, and maybe even a more elegant approach towards doing two things relative to where we were a year ago. And the two things that we need to do is, we do need to add some flexibility in our financial policies. And with that additional flexibility, we think it's necessary and appropriate for us to strengthen some of our fiscal policies as well. And so Mr. Mason will walk us through what those two are. I will say, right at the outset, that when we were just talking about pennies on the tax rate for the capital plan, that is pennies on the tax rate to build things in the city. Those are not pennies in the tax rate to comply with policy, because you're already in compliance with policy. And with the amendment that we're proposing, you're still, you will be in compliance. So we're not talking about pennies on the tax rate to comply with policy, because we're there. It does mean, however, that in future year ends, or in, in future deliberations, when there might be some choices about if we have year-end underspending, per Mr. Littenhouse's question, or year-end revenues came in above budget. In the past, we've allocated those for different one-time needs. For the foreseeable future, we would say instead, at that year-end moment, allocate them to your capital reserves, so we can accomplish a capital program, instead of new things that might come up. And that, so that's really kind of the way we would implement these changes. And so I wanted to say that by way of introduction, and now turn it over to Mr. Mason.
So thank you, Mr. Shields. So what you have before you is a resolution for consideration at an upcoming meeting, I believe, next week. We, we tried to take a fairly minimalist approach to modifications to the, to the financial policies. They've served you very well over the years. They've helped you achieve very high-grade ratings. You're one notch short, but on positive outlook, of a AAA with all three major credit rating services. rating services. We gave thought to a variety of different options, but as my colleague Jennifer Dirksen will tell you, who just a year ago was, was sitting on rating committees at Moody's and has actually rated the City Falls Church in that capacity in the past, the alpha and omega, if you will, the most important thing from a credit rating perspective, is your fund balance position. And you've got a target of 17% and a floor of 12% now. And it is our considered opinion, both as former rating analysts, that because you're taking on a significant amount of leverage, it's been variously described this evening with different adjectives, but it is significant, the best thing you can do to offset that additional leverage and the risk associated therewith is to increase your fund balance position. Now, we're not asking you to increase it immediately. We are through, through monitoring of a couple of your debt policies, which are your debt service to expenditures and your debt payout ratio, both of which are going to be heavily impacted, and I can define those terms as needed, both of which are going to be heavily impacted over the next three or four years by the addition of this debt. At such time as those, those bonds come online and those ratios go negative vis-à-vis your current policy, we are effectively asking you to adopt a policy that would impose somewhat of a springing, if you will, increase in your fund balance. So when your debt service to expenditures gets above 12%, which it will do fairly quickly, when you take the upcoming May sale and then approximately a year later, the first construction financing for the high school, once that policy level is breached, the higher policy limits kick in, which are a floor of 15% and a target of 20%. So slight increases. You presently have a capital reserve, and the other thing that we're doing is, right now, your policy speaks to unassigned fund balance, which is one of five categories of fund balance. We are broadening the definition, this will help you in achieving this objective, we are broadening the definition to make it not just unassigned, but also available fund balance, which brings in the concept of assigned fund balance and committed fund balance. And your capital reserve lies within those other two categories. So if, as we sit here today, you have sufficient balances in the capital reserve to immediately accomplish that higher threshold. Of course, you are anticipating potential spend-down of some of the capital reserve to make the plan smooth out and balance. If your capital reserve gets drawn down and your available fund balance would fall below 15%, the same provision that exists in your current policy, which is when it gets below 12%, would kick in and that you'd have to develop a plan to replenish your fund balance up to the minimum 15% floor over a constrained period of time. We think that this enhancement to your fund balance policy is absolutely critical to going to the rating agencies in the springtime and convincing them that Falls Church can take on this capital program. You only get one shot at doing this. They're going to be rating the bonds in May on the basis of what you're telling them you're going to be doing over the next three to five years, which includes all of this borrowing. They're going to be expecting a balanced, reasonably conservative plan to implement the sizable CIP and do so on an affordable basis. So one of the other important and critical components of that plan is to identify tax rate increases that are dedicated to paying the bonds. That's why there's been a repeated mention this evening of thinking about that 6 cents as for capital and whatever organic revenue growth you get, that's what you're thinking about for, for the rest of the operating budget on either side of the table, general government or schools. But the agencies are going to clearly expect you to raise the real estate tax in some amount, and this goes to Ms. Oliver's earlier point. You certainly do not hurt yourself, as painful as it may be, you don't hurt yourself by raising it more than 6 to give yourself some cushion. It positions you against a tax rate shock in the future. Those additional dollars that aren't immediately needed for debt service can be set aside in the capital reserve and used to future, better balance the overall budget from a debt service perspective going forward. So there's a couple of different prongs to this. One is enhanced fund balance, the other is the expectation on the property tax. And do you have anything to add?
No, I would just reiterate what Joe has said. I think it is very important, as you go to the rating agencies in May, to have sort of a well-thought-out plan that they can sort of sink their teeth into. And, you know, obviously, the more conservative, the better. You know, I think with the land sale proceeds, if they see those taken into account, you know, they'll recognize that that could be possible, but they're also going to question, you know, as some of you have tonight, whether those will sort of, those will come to fruition and when will those come to fruition. They'll want to see what tax rate increases you guys are going to adopt and, and so forth. And I think the policies adjustments that we are proposing tonight will help to sort of be part of that overall plan and help to maintain the rating the best that you can.
I guess, said a different way, if you walk in there with 3 cents on the real estate tax rate and an over-optimistic or rose-colored scenario of when you're going to get the land sale dollars and what kind of economic development revenue stream is going to flow from that, that's going to be viewed as risky. And in all candor, it's likely to get a downgrade. And it might not be one notch, and it might not be one agency. So there's some tough decisions to be made. They're policy decisions, they're not ours. We're just giving you the best advice that we can give you as to how you manage to run this gauntlet. We've seen it done before. We know, we know the buzzwords, the things they're looking for. And I think you've, you've got a series of plans, whether it be these financial policies, whether it be what staff has prepared in terms of recommendations for tax rate increases. If you stick to that plan, you stand a very good chance of maintaining your ratings and hopefully at some point getting that last notch from Moody's and getting AAA, which is what many of your neighbors are. So it can be done, but I would just, I would warn you off of what the pitfalls are. And I have to say this, if, credit ratings are not the be-all to end-all. If, if there's not an appetite to raise all the pennies that are necessary, if there's not an appetite to adopt these modifications to fund balance policy, that's going to have implications on the rating, there can be no doubt about that. But you can get this high school built with AA ratings or AA-minus ratings. Is it going to cost you a little bit more in terms of the interest? As your ratings drop, your interest costs go up. You're not likely to get downgraded out of the AA category. The objective is to hold on to the ratings, if not improve them. But if for some reason you don't get where you need to be, you can still get it done, but it is going to cost you more money. And it's going to be a psychological blow. So I'm just trying to lay out the pros and cons of all sides. So with that, I think Jennifer and I would be happy to take any questions unless, when I had some...
Mr. Mayor, so, so let me try to run a scenario based upon the recommendation here. So at the beginning, it was said that if we add the unassigned fund balance and the capital fund balance, that becomes the new balance that we're working on, right? That's, did I understand that correctly? So we're taking two fund balances and we're merging them into one. So how much do we have in that now? And how much will we have to have in that, assuming that we pass? See, one thing I don't want to do is pass guideline or a change without knowing what it means in dollars and cents. So what does this recommendation mean next year and the year after, for example, if we adopt it?
Ms. Bowe, do you have all those numbers precisely, or?
I can give some estimate on those numbers. So your first question was, was how much do we need, do we, the balances we have? So the unassigned fund balance, general fund balance right now is 4.9 million. And the capital reserve right now, after the last appropriation approved as part of the budget amendments, is at 9.8 million.
And you said 14.9, right?
Yes, 14, sorry. Oh, I'm sorry, it's 14.9, yes.
All right, so I'm asking our consultants here, that's what we've got now. So is that a responsible fund balance right now?
Very much so.
It is, however, can we go back to that slide, Wyatt, on the, no, I, I just, I just want all facts, just to tie it to the 20, I think it was? 20.
Ms. Bowe, I think this is where you're going with it, but I ultimately care about when we get to FY '21 where we're dipping down to 700,000 in capital reserves.
Exactly, so I'm getting to the point that...
Do we need to put in extra pennies to get to this 15% to 20%?
So since this counts as part of the available fund balance, you have a year where you're dropping down to less than a million. So for, your available fund balance is going to drop drastically in fiscal year 2021. So keeping that in mind, staff also recommends that should there be any excess revenues over expenditures that come in years like last fiscal year, we ended with a 490,000 revenue project, actuals more than the, and the underspending in expenditures, those should be put aside as part of the capital reserve because we will be drawing down on the reserves excessively as much as 7.4 million in '21. And it's, it's, it's going to require us setting aside extra money to address that new fiscal policy that's being proposed by the consultants.
What I'm trying to figure out is, we've been given a recommendation, I need to know what it means in dollars and cents.
So with the current budget going from 17% to 20% means 2.5 million dollars.
So can I ask it a little differently? So if we were to adopt the policies as proposed in FY '21, when we dip below 700,000 on capital reserves, what is the total reserves amount that we project to have? And will we need extra pennies there to meet the policy requirement of the 15% to 20% target?
So it would be 14.9 and any, if the economy continues at the pace as it is and any other excess that we have over the expenditures that would have brought that balance up and the 1 million that we have. And should that be not enough, we would have to recognize additional funds as part of the budget development to boost up that balance. And, and the policy recommends doing that only for the years where we don't meet the debt service to expenditure and/or we go below the payout ratio, not for the total life of the debt. So it is projected as like four to five years, and it is in the, it's in the...
A little wider, but...
Yeah, it's still about fiscal year '25 or '26 that we are beyond that threshold. So those four or five years that we really need to be more careful.
So you're saying for these five years that we're most concerned with, we should still be within the 15%, 20% kind of new recommended target without needing extra pennies?
I cannot, I cannot promise on 2021. No, not unless we make sure that any excess revenues that we have or any underspendings we have in expenditures, that we keep banking it into our fund reserve. Maybe in three years, we will get there. However, if we continue to appropriate any overtures that we have and with a less than 1 million, we're not going to be there. No, we're not going to meet it. And as part of the fiscal year '21 budget development, we'd have to identify funds to be within that policy, to comply with that policy.
If I could say it a slightly different way?
Sure.
Right now, your unassigned fund balance is 17%, right? So under the proposed revision, you're looking at 15%. If your capital reserve was zero instead of 9.8 million, you'd still have 2% wiggle room. But if you appropriated every dollar of surplus over the next few years instead of banking it as recommended, then that increases the likelihood that you may have to come up with an extra penny. You've got some wiggle room right now. Remember, we're trying to keep it between 15 and 20. 20 is a target, be great, but we're trying to get the floor up from 12 to 15. Right now, you comply. It's the idea of continuing to do those things at the end of a year where, you know, when you have a surplus to, to pay it forward, if you will, to make compliance that much easier come 2021.
Yeah, I mean, I think it's good that it seems like we've built in a little more flexibility by kind of broadening the definition of, you know, what reserves is, but I want to make sure that before we all say yes, we understand what implications of the tax rate modeling we've talked about, so we have that future view and not, don't just assume that we're safe.
Sorry, can I ask a question about, this much to the managers, to anybody, I mean, the financial management model that we've used the last several years has been, you know, to grow the economy, and we've done that at a region-leading pace. That's what your numbers show. Okay, that's good. The other way that we've accumulated surpluses by the end of the budget years is very careful spending. And, you know, one of the things that attends to that is that when we have a surplus, some of that surplus is directed to activities that we really had wanted to expend more effort on before and didn't because we were budgeting conservatively. Whether it's neighborhood traffic calming or, you know, a need for trailers at the schools, you know, things that, I understand here you've defined like one-time expenses would, would still be allowed, but, I mean, I'm not sure neighborhood traffic calming would count as that or other things that we... So here's the concern that I have, is that if we have a policy that says we're going to take all extra monies and we're going to shovel it over into the capital reserve, it'll be an incentive for departments, city and school, to spend to their last dollar and, and not give us the benefit of that type, you know, spending that we've seen in the last, at least the last three or four years.
I don't think that's the signal that will be received in terms of our department heads. And so to the extent that there is year-end surplus or year-end underspending, I think what we would ask for is with the adoption of this policy, a council buy-in, that our big special project is a high school, a library, and a city hall public safety project, and that's it. Those are our special projects. And that's where any extra dollar that we have goes until we're out of the woods and everything is stabilized. That's what this policy stands for.
This question, Mr. Mason, if I could, just one more.
This was just a point I...
Okay, sorry, go ahead.
Sorry, I just wanted to point out that we've assumed organic revenue growth of 3% of year on average. So keep in mind that as the revenue goes up, if the expenses go up, operating expenses go up, then that means that you need to grow your fund, unassigned fund balance 3% every year as well. So even organically, you're going to have to come up with more money. And if you switch to this available fund balance, which includes capital reserves, again, the point I made earlier is that, you know, it's not going to hurt you to put money in capital reserves that you can spend when you're out of that five-year crunch period. But, but keep in mind that if the operating budget goes up 3%, so is fund balance requirements.
The intent of the capital reserve is for, not just alone for the school, it's for any capital emergency or anything that happens, anything in the cold winter storm. We, the policy calls for a projected balance of 3 million in capital reserve, which of course, we're not keeping up to in some of the years as we see the capital balance, capital reserve balance in our model. So to that effect, dipping down to less than a million is not ideal. However, we need to be mindful that these reserves are not only for the school, but could be used for any other capital projects as needed, emergency projects.
I think, Mr. Z...
Well, CFO, I want to congratulate you on being a better Richard LaConde than, than I anticipate Rich could. He managed to have a smile on his face when he gave us this kind of news, and he managed to smile through it, so kudos for that. Since we have the consultants here, that, you know, you've, you've kind of put out a teaser here that we, if we go to a 15%, 20% model, that we stand a chance, one of, of getting a, you know, the brass ring, the AAA, and we're at AA-minus right now. So given your knowledge of where the markets are going and what the demand would be for any kind of bonds and what the Fed is likely to do in the next... any kind of bonds and what the Fed is likely to do in the next six months or so, what, as practical matter, what difference does a AAA versus what we have make in the bottom markets? Is it appreciable or just, you know, do we have people jumping and giving us a better rate? Or is this a hedge against getting a worse rate?
It's a good question. Let me just clarify, though. Right now, you have AAA ratings from Standard and Poor's and Fitch Ratings, and you're AA1 with a positive outlook for Moody's. When they reviewed you earlier this year, they wanted to take the positive outlook off because they didn't really understand the plans we were working on for the high school. They were concerned about debt. We had a conversation with them. We told them what we were planning. Everything that we've talked about here today and the plan we will bring to them is consistent with what we've told them. Does that mean they're going to immediately raise us to AAA? They may not. They may want to wait and see how you... I mean, this is the first of three planned large borrowings. They may want to see how you operate for a couple of years, you know, with a higher degree of leverage. As to the question of whether one last AAA rating is really going to change your borrowing costs, the answer to that is not particularly. A couple of basis points maybe, which is a very small portion of 1% on the overall cost of capital. I think it's really more psychological in terms of the benefit. Being a triple AAA rated government is rarefied air. There just aren't that very many of them around the country. You have a lot of peers and neighbors. Pretty much everybody you saw on the board tonight when we were looking at tax rates and so forth is rated triple AAA. You have, you're within a whisker of getting there, and I think collectively, everybody would like to get there, but is it really going to change your cost of funds? No. But similarly, if it goes down a level, it's not going to be so draconian that it's going to prevent you from getting your capital plan accomplished.
Are there other policy measures outside of changing our fund balance that would send the same message to the credit rating agencies? You know, maybe it's a cap on expenditure growth, maybe it's just a cut in operating expenses in general? Or is this the bigger drive of how they would determine what our credit rating is? Because it seems to me that this is driven purely out of perception to make sure that we get cheaper borrowing and we maintain that rating. But are there other things that are just as meaningful as opposed to combining all of this?
There is one other element to this that we didn't really touch on about the limit on debt service. Touch on that.
Debt service to expenditures. Yeah, so in addition to raising the fund balance, we also looked at basically loosening a little bit the debt ratios. So debt service to assessed value and then debt service to expenditures. Those are the two main debt metrics that the rating agencies look at when they review. Debt service to expenditures, we've talked about a little bit. As you take on this debt, it's going to go over your current policy. And so once you hit, you go over that policy, that's when it will trigger the fund balance. Fund balance is the most important aspect that a rating analyst looks at. It's the first thing that they look at when they pick up a credit. And so to sort of offset the increase in debt, that's why we suggested that, you know, strengthen your fund balance policy a little bit. And I think the range gives you guys a little bit of flexibility, but also provides the rating agencies with, you know, some comfort that you are, you know, willing to sort of keep levels at a more strengthened level.
And they don't question the fact that you're basically combining the two, which would make it potentially more susceptible to...
It's the way they already look at it.
Yeah.
They look at it, available fund balance. So in part, what we're doing is really modernizing your policy at the same time that we're increasing the thresholds. We did look at, I mean, there's other things that we considered, but nothing has quite the same juice as fund balance. There are other concepts like total fixed costs, which are sort of emerging metrics that the rating agencies are using, but we didn't go there because, you know, you don't want to, you don't want to put yourself in a policy box where you adopt a policy that then through no fault of your own, you come out of compliance with it. So total fixed costs is a concept that takes debt service and pension and OPEB payments together. When you look at those, you could be in compliance one day, but then, I mean, we've had a wonderful run-up in the stock market this year. If it goes the other direction the next couple of years, then, you know, maybe your total fixed cost ratio goes up because your pension payments will have to go up. We saw on the screen on both the general government and the school side that both units reaped benefits by retirement contributions dropping due to market performance. Well, the reverse of that can be true as well. So we didn't, we sort of looked at but discarded that for that very reason.
Good.
Mr. Snyder?
So one thing you said a couple of minutes ago really caught my attention. So as I understand it, there are two parts to the recommendation. The one part we see here, which is basically, I get it, you want a certain fund balance. So if some emergency comes up, we can keep paying the bond. Well, there's that's, you know, I get that at a very high level of abstraction. That's what we're doing. So what's this other thing about ratio to per citizen and all that other? Is that in here? Okay, show me where that is. And what does that mean? I mean, in...
Yeah, well, it's really...
Sense, because we are going to dramatically increase that regardless of how it's funded. One way or the other, we're going to be increasing the amount that people are paying. So what is the proposed plan that we have tonight in compliance with what you're recommending? Or is you're recommending something else? Tell me a little bit more about this other piece.
Well, the other piece is it's under debt management. It's really items two and six.
It's line number 179 and 180 on page five of...
Yeah, so really, this is not a, I wouldn't call it a strengthening as much as an acknowledgement that because of the borrowing that you're undertaking, you're going to be out of compliance with your existing policies. So when you go, when debt service to expenditures rises above 12%, we're suggesting in the recommendation that you put a hard cap at 15% because that's going to give the agencies comfort that there's an end to it.
But I heard you say something a couple of minutes ago about other metrics like the debt per capita and things like that. That's not in here. I didn't see that. All we're talking about is various ways to establish an amount of money that we're going to guarantee we're going to have to cover emergencies and situations like that, so the bondholders are going to get paid. And all of this relates to that. Is there any other financial metric?
It's all intertwined with that. No, I was answering the gentleman's question over here. I'm sorry, I didn't know your name.
Ross.
Ross. I was answering his question. That was how the subject of other metrics came up, but...
Right, but these other metrics are not in here?
Correct.
Right, okay, that's what I wanted to establish.
They weren't your existing policies. We didn't choose to add them.
Because I didn't see it, and I just wanted to make sure. Those other metrics aren't here.
No, there's not another shoe to drop.
I'm wondering if, I'm wondering, Ms. Bowe, if you could prepare something for us just based on what our historical numbers are, like, for example, this 3% budget increase, what this will end up meaning maybe in the year, particularly 2021, FY 2021? For example, just eyeballing it, we're at 2% above, right? 17, our floor is 15, so that gives us 2% to work with. But if budgets are going up 3% for the next two years, it seems to me we're talking maybe 3% or 4% below in 2021. And I'm wondering what the implications are for that, for our tax rate. In other words, how many cents do we need to make up to get to that number, particularly in 2021? Do you understand what I'm requesting? To me, it seems to me if we're talking an assumption that budgets may go up or revenue may increase, organic growth maybe 3% a year, we're 2% above right now, right? We've got two more years before the stuff really hits in 2021. And so at 3%, you've got 3% compounding on 3%, that's at least 6% higher budgets in 2021. But we only have 2% we've got to work with right now without any additional funds. Does that make sense on what I'm suggesting? I'd just like an estimate of what that amount would be in the year 2021, either on tax rate or just...
Are you asking for an estimate tonight or asking her?
Well, whatever's available. If you could do it tonight, great. I mean, I could sort of run it in my head, or next meeting, if you could do it, that'd be great.
It will be, but it'll have a lot of assumptions. The model that we did here assumes a 2.5% in assessed valuation increase over the years. The 3% is overall revenue increase, but that's an assumption you're making that you're going to have that all the way till 2021. I always, I never forget to remind you that we're in the ninth year of recovery. We may not see this 3% every year revenue increase. It is my duty to let you all know that the economy has seen dips sooner than, and 10 years is the maximum we have gone without an adjustment, and that was the internet boom. So an adjustment is expected. I went to the National League of Cities. All cities and counties are projecting revenue growth, but very gingerly, and the expenditures are rising faster than the revenue growth is. I mean, you saw, we're expecting a 15% anticipated, 10% to 15% increase in health benefits. I mean, it's, what you're asking for can be done, but how close is it going to be to reality? It'll have a lot of assumptions in it.
So why don't you just run with 2.5 and 3% then? If you're not sure which number it'll be, a 2.5 to 3% budget increases for the next two years.
And also, it'll have to have some assumptions on what the real estate tax increments are going to be. Like for this year, they're, we're proposing the 6 cent increase for the pennies, six pennies for the capital. And use whatever the guidance would be and no tax increment on the operating side, however, whatever the guidance would be on the X percent in the resolution. And use that 2.6 million to strategically address the areas on the school and the city side to, on the compensation as well as other inter-jurisdictional expenditures and other needs as far as the benefit increments go with the 85% of the school's budget on personnel and over 50% of our budget on the school, city side on personnel. I'm just stating all these facts.
So just run your chart, if you don't mind, your chart with 2.5 and then do it at 3% budget growth over the next two years and see where that gets us as far as 15% floor, what we'd have to do to get to 15% floor in fund balance.
So your question, as I understand it, goes back to the, with 712,000 in reserves plus our unassigned fund balance.
Yes.
Where do we need to be?
Yeah, it just seems to me like there's a shortfall. Like in my head, I'm seeing a shortfall of a couple percent. That's just my, me eyeballing it right now.
One quick thing.
Yeah.
You got to make sure that when we talk about the underlying budget growth, so it's not that, you know, we're at 17% if we have a 3% budget growth agreement back at 14. What that means is that the overall budget, that the same amount of money will be, it's going to be, it's going to be like, you know, maybe 1% or something like that.
Well, if we don't, if we...
I agree with you completely that seeing what that is and what we'd have to be, it makes sense, but, you know, I just, I'm afraid some people are going to be thinking that, you know, we've got to make up, we've got to grow that unassigned fund balance, you know, from, you know, from 17 to 20 and then to 23 when that's...
Just got to, I just got to maintain 15. It seems like that's going to be a challenge with the number of 712 there.
Right.
Possibly. That's the only thing I'd like to know, so by way of full disclosure, people don't understand.
I understand the question, and we can get that to you.
Ms. Hardy, Jim, question?
Yeah, I had two. One was the same as what the mayor just asked, is I should just have that same breakdown because I asked that earlier question. The second is, you mentioned one way to get ahead of that is to commit to any underspending we have at the end of each fiscal year to kind of shove it into capital reserves?
That's right.
Is that a policy recommendation? Because I didn't see it.
No, that's a management strategy. And so with, you know, when we discussed this a year ago, we were talking about pennies on the tax rate to get unassigned fund balance to 20%. And there are good reasons why we're thinking about the problem that way. What this approach does is gives us a little bit more time. We're in compliance on the date that you adopt this. We'll be in compliance for two years. And then, you know, so we need to take that two-year time to address the question that both you and the mayor have asked, what are we going to need in two years? And we think it's manageable. The way we've been thinking this through, we think it's manageable, but that's based on a whole set of assumptions. So we'll just lay that out so that the next time this is discussed, you have that very clear.
But you're also not prescribing that any overages we have or underspending we have automatically goes in capital reserves? I think Mr. Duncan asked about, you know, worried about changes in behavior and how we might spend if that was an actual policy we put on paper.
Well, the council did that this year.
That's on line 77, right? I mean, or, sorry, 27.
So it's not in the staff report and it's not in the policy. That would come up each year at year-end financial reporting. We would say, let's keep our eye on the big picture here and put whatever we have. And there might be years when we don't have any, in which case, you know, that's, won't be good. But that's what you can anticipate will come from management.
No, I think that's appropriate to kind of leave it up to council discretion.
So if the council wanted to put that in the resolution directing that that be the case, we could, when we get to council budget guidance, we can, we can take that language up.
I think this past year, we spent some of it on neighborhood traffic calming and the rest went into reserves. So I think having that discretion to kind of figure out where we might have not been able to prioritize certain projects is important to have. I wouldn't want to see it in official policy, I think is my point.
Can you, can you go a little bit further on, explain what the effect of line 179, 180, and then it ports over to the 15, 20? Right now, our policy is 25% of the total debt will be repaid within five years and at least 50% of the total debt within 10 years. And I see the strategy going forward that we...
That's 20-year debt, and we're switching to 30-year debt.
Well, yeah, that's kind of my point here. So we, so we're encumbered to, that's 15, 20, basically, to offset the...
You could pick either one, Mr. Z. Either one of those policies are going to get breached in terms of your debt service to expenditures or your debt payout ratio. Some, a part of it depends on how much you grow your budget over the next couple of years, but they're both going to be breached. So we just wanted to be thorough and make, acknowledge the fact that both are going to be breached, at least temporarily. As Ms. Bowe said, this is not forever. It's when you hit the peak in the debt service after taking on the debt for all of the projects, both city CIP, schools, libraries, city hall, et cetera, it's going to crest at some point and then it's going to trend down. And so violating either of these existing debt policies that are already on your books, the purpose of these amendments was just simply to acknowledge that and indicate that those would be triggering actions that would trigger the higher fund balance reserve policy.
So my question is that we know that, we've seen the charts, we've got our estimate for when we'll get back below the debt service ratio. For next Monday's meeting, Ms. Bowe, could we have an estimate for when we will get back in compliance with the payout ratio? Because I think that's a longer horizon.
My recollection was that we'd be out of compliance for five years, but...
If we could just confirm that next week, that would be helpful. That's great.
And then also give us the assumptions that you're going to make to reach that sort of your mark. I'm sure you're making some, I'm sure you're making some assumptions with regard to growth and other kinds of things. So if you can give us that, and the sale of land, et cetera, et cetera, so we don't have to ask you that question again. Thank you.
Other questions?
Could I ask one?
Of course.
Something you said about conversations that we already had with the ratings agencies, I didn't quite catch. Have they been provided with, you know, information that's similar to what we're considering here and been told, anything in particular about it? That's one question. And two, what's the timetable that this needs to be done under in order to have our table set properly before we do our borrowing?
Do you want to...
Okay.
So first question, to what extent have we been having these conversations with the rating agencies? We've been talking about the high school project for the rating agencies for five years, and it's been along the lines of this is a major capital project and we're working on a plan of finance to accomplish it. In the past three years, it's been more specific about the economic development as a part of the plan. But the rating agencies... But the rating agencies have had a, had a $100 million-plus figure in, in their surveillance of the, of the City of Falls Church for, I believe, definitely for three years and I believe five.
So, that would be good if we've been telling them an economic development story, because for the last three years, the economic development story's been very good. I guess my question is, what, to what level of detail have we talked about, you know, our interest in changing our fiscal policies to move floors and ceilings and doors and windows and whatever else it is that we're planning on doing? I mean, how much, how much have we already created a level of expectation that you feel that we, if we don't meet it, we will be punished for it in terms of changing our fiscal policies?
We have, we have not discussed explicitly changing our policies with the rating agencies. But what we are bringing to you tonight is what we believe is, is the bottom line of what a rating agency, what anybody who's thinking about rating the city or selling the city bonds would be interested in seeing.
Okay, so, and then the question-
If I may, could I add to that?
Sure, just somebody answer the question, when we, when we need to do this in order to have things set for-
Okay, so, so what they have been told is that the city's gone through a very public and open process about the school project, the CIP overall, you've had multiple town halls and so forth, that it would be made open and public what tax increases that would be required to fund the program, but also they've been told that there is an economic development or redevelopment component to the high school project without putting any specific markers out there as to dollars that could be received, but that it's a plan that's going to have elements of local tax increases, economic development, and we will put a prudent plan together, and that's really what they've been told. You've not been bound to any specific marker on policies or specific rates or anything other than what you've already told the public, to the extent they've gone on your website and looked at any material that's been presented to you. And I don't know that they have, I sincerely doubt that they have. The timing of this, ideally, we would like to have this in hand as quickly as possible, such that it can be implemented and embedded within your FY '19 budget. The staff plan is for you to take it up next Monday and pass the resolution. That would be ideal. And now, in certain terms, you should probably have this resolution passed and in hand before you go see the rating agencies, which we haven't finalized the schedule, it'll be sometime in late winter, early spring. But the preference would, I think, at least from the staff perspective, would be to, you know, cross something off the agenda, so to speak.
You had mentioned a couple other examples of cities that went through something similar, right? Where you've got a blip. I mean, in the history of the city in terms of performance and credit rating, I mean, this seems like a blip. I mean, I know it's a big deal, but what other cities, you know, if we wanted to go do some research, could we look at that went through something similar and look at how that impacted?
Right. We've, we've talked at times, I mean, we've been sort of looking at this for the last 18 months or thereabouts, and we've, we've relayed our experience with your neighbor, the City of Fairfax. Several years ago, they did a $100 million, I can't remember whether it was schools or courts, I think it was schools program. They were very public about the need for a 10-cent tax increase. At the time, they were not rated AAA, and they absorbed that debt. They didn't need all the 10 cents that they originally projected, and at the end of the day, they got, they got their credit ratings upgraded. So, that's one neighboring experience. The Town of Leesburg has had an elevated level of debt service at times since past. That's not prevented them from getting improvements to their ratings. So, there, there are many, this is a once-in-a-multi-generation school project that you're just going to have to absorb over the next several years and-
But any of them that did what you guys are recommending here?
Yes, they're all clients. They all did what we're recommending.
Of course.
Well, I can only speak to what I truly know, right? So, I'm-
When you say they did what you recommended, they implemented the same kind of, you know, floors and ceilings that you're recommending to us? So, when we go to look Fairfax, we'll see something very similar in their fiscal policies as, as you're proposing for us.
Yes.
One thing, you know, with the historic data, we have traditionally and historically been above these targets that we're laying out here in this policy. And that's another reason why we feel pretty comfortable recommending this policy.
So, that's different from what at least our understanding has been about the fund balance in Fairfax, right? The, the story is that Fairfax's fund balance's requirement is not as high as ours. And you're, you're telling me tonight that we've been-
The city of the city.
City, Fairfax City, that we've been wrong about that. Sorry.
Well, I think probably we're talking, their unassigned fund balance, but probably their available fund balance, I think.
Okay, well, anyway, we, tonight, we don't need to go in there, but before our next meeting would be useful, I think, because you do hear the Fairfax City example used, and it's a good example, and we have an expert on it here in the room. So, you know, if they promised a 10-cent tax increase and didn't have to levy all that, that's just dandy news. Let's, let's know more about that. If that's a good story, then maybe there's something in there we can make ourselves feel happier about.
Okay, other questions? Mr. Castillo?
Thank you, Mr. Tarde. Just a quick couple of questions. First of all, to the extent we, we think interest rates are going up, right? So, if you go to 7 cents rather than 6 and pay some of that off on the front end, you would get a better bang for your buck on that in terms of borrowing cost savings. Is that, am I right about that, or, or would it be significant?
Are you asking me whether if you did a higher tax rate increase, you could pay debt off early? Is that what you're asking?
Yeah, in other words, would that extra penny pay some additional dividends if you assume that interest, the borrowing rates are going to be going up? So, we're, we're borrowing less expensive money down the road? Or is that just not-
Well, typically, typically, bonds issued in the public markets have a call provision, which means you really can't prepay that debt as effectively.
Right. But in other words, if we, yeah, if we've, but, okay, got that. All right.
Yeah, I think the, the, probably the most important factor, and I think you may have mentioned it earlier, the most important, one of the most important factors in your borrowing rate, even if rates go up, is to stay where you are at, at the current rating level. Because, you know, as, as I said earlier, as, as ratings decline, your cost of capital is going to go up. You're going to pay more for, for the debt. So, you know, I think having, having a stronger tax component to the plan is going to enhance your ability to keep those ratings where they are, and that's going to drive the lowest possible cost of capital.
And then, as, as the rating agencies look at our rating and, and the high school construction project, are they going to factor in the payouts from economic development at all? Are they basically going to assume for the purposes of their exercise that unless and until something changes and we start seeing money, that we would, that they would value that essentially at zero for their rating purposes?
Most likely at zero until it became-
Okay, that's, that's what I thought.
Ms. Hardy?
What Mr. Mason said, just jogged something that we had talked about several months ago, which was, I think, when we looked at the financing plan for the high school, Ms. Bawa, we had said that one of the things we hadn't decided on was actually whether to have a call on the bond to be able to prepay and be able to use payments from the land transaction to pay down the, the balance on the bond, as opposed to just paying down debt service. And so, we said that should result in less interest over the life of it. And I, I think you all said that we didn't have to make that decision until probably this spring. Are we at a point now where we need to have that discussion? And how does that impact this conversation?
That's correct. We'll be bringing bond issuance structure, how to structure the debt as part of resolution before the bonds are issued, closer to when we go for issuance, and the calling, if the tranche one, two, or three, whichever ones would be callable, it'll come to, closer to issuance. So, we're hoping to bring it sometime in spring.
So, if we were to structure it that way, does that change anything that we're talking about tonight in terms of the use of reserves? That chart we all love now on page 20?
I would think not, because we're not going to, I mean, the model assumes, you're seeing the first piece of the, and you'll add to it, the first piece of the land acquisition comes in fiscal year '22, '23, and then the second, every other year after that, 15, 15, and 10 million. That's how the model assumes the incoming proceeds from the land sale. And what the interest rate impact is going to be, you know, if, if we have, some bonds have the callable options and some, if we specifically want it and we have to pay some extra basis points, Mr. Mason and the rest of the team is going to bring that to us as part of the debt, the structuring of the debt. And whether we are going to have upfront principal paying all the way or backloading the principal payments to help us smooth out our payments, the debt service, all those things are going to be visited as part of the debt structuring of the debt.
Got it. Because ultimately, when we talk about our ratios long-term, I think that's important to think about, our ability to be able to borrow in future years, because we're really constraining ourselves right now by borrowing so much that 20 years from now, when we may need to borrow again, you know, if we don't start paying down some of that principal early, I think it's important to keep in mind what that does to future generations.
That's why these call provisions, who determines that? Is it the market or do we have a, do we have a preference in how we? Because I know there's certain minimum periods, I mean, they're not going to allow you to call one in a year. It's probably going to be five or 10 or whatever. Can you sort of shed some light on who determines what, you know, who controls that?
Sure. So, a call provision is effectively a lockout period. In, in your typical 20-year level principal bond issues, the first 10 years of the loan are not callable. You can call the last 10 years. That's called a standard prepayment provision in the market. You don't really pay up for that, you don't pay a premium or a penalty for that. That's what the market generally accepts. So, there's no cost for that call option, per se. What's been discussed in the past is potentially shortening that call so that you can potentially pay down with one-time dollars from land sale proceeds, make it, let's say, for the sake of example, a five-year call. So, that kind of corresponds to the 2022 time horizon when dollars may hopefully start to flow from the economic development. And then, the question becomes, do you want to build that flexibility in there, which you, you make that choice? Okay? Now, if you go with a shorter call than what the market is accepting with no penalty, then you're probably going to pay a little bit of what's called a call premium for that, and it ebbs and flows like most things in the market, but it's, you know, probably a quarter of a percent in terms of a higher rate. It's not huge, particularly measured against the ability to pay off debt. I mean, the, the overall potential interest savings over the life of the loan far outweighs the, the cost of the call premium. But the, the question that's, you know, probably more relevant to that decision, whether to pay debt off or keep the funds and use them to pay debt service, is what it does to the city's budgetary cash flows and tax rate. Yes, if you pay bonds off, as a general principle, you're going to pay a lot less interest, but you, you might better manage your budget over the long haul by keeping those dollars and using them to defray debt service. And that's a mathematical exercise that we need to talk about again. But you, you have control of, of the call provision. You can even go potentially and do part of this if you decide that you want to potentially dedicate $20 million to paying off debt. You want to, you know, want to split the difference, so to speak. You could go and do $20 million of this project with a direct bank loan. Direct bank loans generally have much more favorable and flexible call provisions. You can call it earlier, potentially with minimal or no penalty. So, there are options.
And if the fact that you have a call provision doesn't mean necessarily you have to call it, when it becomes, you can let it ride for me.
Yeah. You've paid for the privilege, you don't have to use it.
If you could just, in like, two seconds, tell us what the direct bank loan, I'm not familiar with that concept, or just getting a commercial loan, essentially?
Yeah, it's, it's effectively a municipal tax-exempt loan from, from a bank. We do them all the time. We've done them for the city when the city hasn't wanted to go at the time and expense of going to the public markets for one reason or another. We put a solicitation or an RFP out to regional and national banks. They provide proposals back to us, and we take whoever's got the best rate and terms.
And so, what's the typical delta between that and issuing a bond?
It's a very good question. It varies, and-
Approximately?
It varies.
Quarter, quarter percent?
It, it varies. I'll, I'll give you an example. We have a client on the eastern shore of Maryland that all summer long, the public markets looked like the best deal, and when push came to shove, we did, we did a direct bank loan and said to ourselves, if we didn't think we could do better with a public sale, we would just go ahead and do the bank loan. And you know what? We got a bank loan that was probably 10 or 15 basis points lower than what the market produced. So, why spend the money? Why spend the time to go do a public sale when you can get 95% of what you need for a fraction of the time and effort? So, but it, it varies.
What's the cost differential? Meaning like the commission associated with taking it out to the public market versus the cost associated with doing a direct bank loan? I know that there's an interest rate difference, but what's the-
Sure, sure. I see your point. It's you, in either case, you're going to pay your financial advisor and your bond counsel to, to lead the charge on both processes, so those don't change. The chief difference is, in a public market, you don't have to pay the underwriter, which is the, the investment bank that buys those bonds and then turns around and sells them to investors, and that's anywhere between $5 and $10 per thousand dollars. So, you basically cut out the, you cut out the underwriter. But oftentimes, the public market produces the better result, even though the cost is higher. Yep.
So, I mean, I think that's something that obviously, I presume you'd be preparing for us when the time gets close.
Of course.
So, we'll have that analysis.
Our job is to show you all these options.
Catching. And I think the other thing that's also important is, Mr. Duncan alluded to, in the rising interest rate environment, when you put it out. You know, if you put it out a little bit before you might need it, it still may be worth it in the long run if you've got 30 years' interest to carry.
Let's just say you don't get, don't get excited about a 30-year bank loan.
You won't get a 30-year bank loan.
No, I'm talking about the bonds. The bonds, what I was talking about.
The only bank loan you're getting for 30 years is a mortgage.
Are there other questions before we let our friends here take off? Ms. Oliver?
Can we take a break before the next item, please?
Sure. We've got one last item, if you want to try to power through that and then take a break, or do we want to go ahead and take a break now? All right, she, Ms. Oliver wants a break, we're taking a break. Mr. Shields and Dr. Noonan, any setup for the last portion of our joint discussion for what said has been said?
Okay. So, members of the school board, members of the council, what, what is before you is a draft resolution? And just by way of setup, it has been the council's tradition, probably for six years now, to adopt guidance. That's correct. To adopt guidance before, in the December timeframe, so that as we're building our budgets, we have some input and some direction from the city council in terms of what your expectations are. So, on page one is, is the resolution that simply states the council's intent and purpose in this resolution. And going to then page two really is the substance of it. And so, I'll, I'll just give a, a quick orientation in terms of what's new and what has been in guidance before. The opening paragraph is largely the same as what the council has adopted in years past. Some broad statements of intent and, and broad direction. Bullet number one also is familiar language, and that is to review all city government and school programs and operations to achieve the most cost-effective delivery of services possible. In the past, there's been a little bit more elaboration on that for some specific areas of interest to the city council where you, where you'd like to look for efficiencies. This is actually just kept very broad. Item two is exactly the same language that was in your resolution last year, stating the intention to maintain appropriate discipline on operating budgets in light of the very significant capital program. Bullet three is new. And so, what last year was, there was a sentence in addition to the paragraph, bullet number two, that said, accordingly, operating budget should stay within the bounds of what the economy gives through natural revenue growth. So, three is different, and it would state FY '19 general fund, operating budget inclusive of general government and school operation should be no more than X percent growth relative to the FY '18 budget. 3% growth would be aligned with what our revenue projections are. Any revenue above that budget level should be dedicated to accomplishing the approved capital program. And then, bullet four, compliance with fiscal policies, that's the same as last year. Multi-year revenue and expenditure projections, that's the same as last year. Multi-year revenue and expenditure projections, that's the same as last year. Six is the same as last year. Level of employee compensation that is competitive with the regional labor market and sustainable over the long term and that funds the pension plan according to the ARC. That's the same as last year. In fact, all of these are either the same or very similar to what you've seen in the past. And I'll just note kind of what they get at. Item seven really gets to that walkable and great place aspect of the city council's work plan for the past several years. What's new in item eight is to add a 10-year planning horizon for the CIP, and so we'll do that. We're also planning to do a six-year detailed CIP because that's aligned with the way the transportation funding streams are now, as opposed to a five-year CIP.
Is that in here?
The six-year is not. We're kind of planning to do that anyway, so I didn't put it into guidance. The 10-year is really a specific council request, and so we've added that in. Item nine is to use the NVTA 30% and 70% funds, and we are planning to do that. In fact, the next item on the agenda is about how we're planning to do that, and it is Item 10 is to make sure we keep our eye on the investment proceeds that were made into the pension fund, and that's the $600,000 that was on the slide that Ms. Bawa presented. And so we would keep the, make sure that people, that that doesn't get forgotten. And then the last is just a good public information campaign. So those are the items. I'm really sort of queuing off of last year's. I'd be happy to get any council comments on that, but I think the one that will really kind of be the key thing that will help shape how we develop our budgets is bullet three.
Okay. Questions? Mr. Snyder?
Thanks a lot. I'd like to request the addition of a bullet to work to reduce the city's metro obligations. This is so when I play the skunk at various parties that we have the support of the city council in doing that. I don't, I can't promise results, but I think we need to push for a reduction in those obligations. So hopefully, we can craft some language. I don't, it can be generic. We don't, we need to spend a lot of time crafting it, but that's now risen to be a significant part of our budget. And I think we need to commit ourselves to doing what we can to reducing that. So that would be helpful. And I want to go back to your bullet number three because it seems to me the last sentence actually gets back into the discussion we had earlier. I don't disagree that that should be one potential priority, but there may be other needs, and I don't want this to be yielded as a club, and it may be in its current language. So I just, any revenue above that budget level should be considered to be dedicated. I don't mind putting the notion in there, but I don't necessarily commit it. There may be other needs, either on the school side or the city side, that take precedent in this particular year. So that'd be my only point. I think it's very consistent with the discussion we had a few minutes ago about use of any surplus we have in the budget. We want a little more flexibility there. So again, I don't want to engage in wordsmithing tonight, but I just like a little bit of flexibility there.
Other comments? Questions?
I just want to say, sorry, that that sentence in there though, Dave, is a very powerful sentence to sort of support going to bond counsel in April or May because it speaks to a real commitment by council by voting on this, that we are going to try to accomplish and prioritize this capital program, which is extremely ambitious.
Well, I would like a discussion because I didn't hear them say that. So this is kind of new to me, and it strikes me that it ties our hand. I don't mind it as being an objective, but again, there may be other pressing needs that our taxpayers in a particular year might want some small percentage spent on something else other than poured into that if it puts us far above the target.
It's the guidance. It doesn't mean that we can't do that. It's just a statement of our objective, which I thought we just spent a lot of time tonight on the fact that everybody wants to go forward with this school project.
That's not the question. The question is that we're tying our hands to doing this.
Well, I support Councilmember Oliver's position. I don't see any language here that particularly ties my hand. And the fact that it says should is aspirational. It doesn't say shall. I would take exception to reducing it to a may, which is kind of where I think you're going with that. So I like the language where it is, should, and it's guidance, as Ms. Oliver said. And so we're either serious about the school or we're not, so.
Well, I'm serious as, you know, the grim reaper about the school, and I agree with Mr. Snyder. I think it should be, future councils should be given flexibility at least to take, you know, some small percentage for other pressing uses. I mean, I don't read should to be optional. I guess shall would be mandatory, but should sounds pretty directive to me. Should be considered for dedication to accomplishing the approved capital program would make me happy.
Other comments?
Mr. Shields, can you present two versions?
So one would be, should be considered to be dedicated?
Considered for dedication to accomplishing.
I'm sorry, Councilmember Duncan, you've got to explain to me what that means.
Well, I'm struck. Mr. Snyder is right. It's hard to wordcraft in the committee, but the intent is to give future councils the option to take some of the under spending, which is usually what it is, and dedicate it to something besides the approved capital program. I mean, I just come up with language that says that.
Well, Mr. Duncan, I think budget guidance, the word is guidance here. Say mandatory goals or whatever else.
I'm not buying into that. I mean, these documents, once they become immortalized, are, you know, they are like the Holy Grail. I mean, you know, you can't, oh, that's what the budget guidance says. You can't violate that. No, I've seen that movie before. I'm not, I'm not paying a ticket for that.
So is the compromise and the way to move forward is just to have Mr. Shields craft two alternatives that council can vote on next Monday? And you can have input on the wordsmithing when you're not under time pressure?
It's okay with me. What Mr. Snyder said about Arlington was, about transportation, you sent us something about Arlington's guidance. Was that along the lines of what he's saying, or it'd be good to be consistent with our bigger neighbor if we can be, if it's appropriate?
I think it is. I think that their direction was, or their guidance was, work to reduce it. And so I think that'll be a starting point, and, but I'll get that language out and put this.
Yeah, I thought that was good language. Okay.
Ms. Hardy?
So I think given the very sobering discussion we've had about our capital plan, and we always talk about it every year at budget season, but given that we have our school board colleagues here, a suggestion or kind of add-on for bullet point one, number one, I think it's kind of given that we always view kind of all operations to achieve the most cost-effective delivery of services, but we kind of danced around this in the past. But I'd like to talk about where there are places where we can combine operations for better efficiency across general government and schools. And budgets at times seems like a good time to discuss those opportunities, whether we can implement them this fiscal year or next fiscal year. So I'll put that on the table for discussion.
Okay. I want to piggyback on that because one of the things that I don't see clearly in here is that, you know, we've put a huge financial obligation on the city, some that was voted for, some that was not voted for, a majority that voted that approved it, others that disagreed. And I feel that if there is any time, I think the words monumental have been used, and historic in terms of the obligations to the cities, that if there's ever a time to provide guidance from a council perspective to the citizens of Falls Church, is that now's the time to tighten our belts in terms of operations. Because we do have a huge obligation, and I think that it sends a clear message that it's, you know, it's not a, it's not a blank check. We can't just continue to build, and it is improvement investment in the city, but in as many areas as possible to control costs to offset those initial obligations. I don't know what that means from a wordsmithing perspective, but I think that it sends a very, very good message to folks that we're aware, it's a huge obligation, we're going to do everything we can to tighten our belts and even cut costs to some extent to help cover that. What that means, I don't know, but I think it would be good to put that guidance in there. It'd mean a lot to the folks that are very wary of the obligations we've already committed ourselves to.
Mr. Webb?
One to, of those two last comments, is just to reiterate again for us, we get it that it's a huge responsibility and commitment that we're about to embark on, and we're willing to do our part, but I just want to make sure that we know that, that some of our costs are set in a way that if kids show up, we have to, we're obligated to do that. And there's very little in the way of cutting that we are going to be able to do to accomplish those type of things. With regard to looking at potential sharing, I'm definitely in favor of that. I think we've done some of that, and we potentially have done some of that in the past, but of course, I think Mr. Shields and Dr. Noonan, if they can look at other ways and things that may operationally work that both areas can use, I'm definitely in favor of looking at them as well. But there are definitely some functional differences. For some things, a little bit more challenging for the schools and general government to look at for potential sharing, but yeah, I think that is always a good something to take into consideration when we begin this process. Because this year, I, you know, I think it's going to be a very challenging budget because of the obligation that we are undertaking, and we do have to look at it from as best we can to do our part in making sure that we tighten our belts. But I think we have to be careful on our side of when we do that because of where our costs lie at.
So who gets to, you know, start, who wants to fill in the X? So we can do rock, paper, scissors as to whether school board or city council, you know, fills in the X? I mean, I don't have a long speech. I just, you know, the purpose of these meetings every year that I go to them is to try to give signals to the manager and superintendent that, you know, the elected officials have put their heads together and they have a number in mind. Some years, we can't come up with a number, but this year, I'd like to sustain the unity of effort and purpose that we saw in the bond referendum campaign, which, you know, was solidly, although not overwhelmingly supported, and demonstrate to folks that, you know, we're obviously on the council side, going to do all we can to grow the economy, and we're going to fight about the fund balance apparently, and we're going to try to get every nickel out of Davenport that we possibly can without having to raise taxes so much that people, you know, run for the exits. And yet, you know, restraint and operating spending is going to be required, I think. So I propose, I proposed to a couple of people in conversations that we actually have a two-year commitment so that we don't have to sit here a year from now and do the same thing. And we all go about our business of teaching kids and running the city and building these schools, libraries, and city hall, that we agree to 2% for two years on the operating side. That's the end of my speech.
I like it. Mr. Castillo wanted to say something.
Well, since it's your resolution, I'll just give a couple of thoughts. I think as the chair noted, we have to take all comers, and our comers cost a lot more incrementally than an individual citizen in the city of Falls Church. They come in with a price tag of $15,000-ish plus. I think it would be good to analyze, by the rough back-of-the-envelope estimate, is we've seen about a 2X growth premium in the school system in terms of school enrollment versus overall population growth. And I think it would be good going forward to understand, to the extent there is organic revenue growth, how that should be allocated based on the growth and its cost pressures. I'm sure that you all understand that we have our duty to develop our budget, and the city council passes on the appropriation amount, but we also live here, and we want to make this work, and obviously, things are going to be tight. But I think also, this discussion, like 2% over two years, means we have to have a much larger discussion in the community with parents and citizens about what do you think about larger class sizes? Because as the superintendent noticed, noted earlier, we can do all the resource sharing we want, but class sizes will increase, and we need to socialize that with the community very carefully before we commit to anything.
Other comments?
I mean, I'd my two cents. I'm not sure what the number is, but the message I think is we've got to live within our means. We're talking about a six cent, I think, tax increase next year, potentially more to get it to 15% in a year or two. There's all sorts of other things that we haven't contemplated that may hit our door. I just feel like we've got to come out of the blocks together with a number that we can live with. It may not be all we want, but I think we're going to have a fantastic school and some great new things in our community that are going to be wonderful investments in our future for years and years to come. And so I think tightening our belts for a couple of years is something that we ought to try to find a way to do. I'm not sure what that number is. We understand, I think, on city council that the schools have had some extraordinary needs, and almost every year I've been on council, the schools have gotten a higher percentage increase than the city side has. So I don't think we're not cognizant of that, but I think we also need to be cognizant of our overall tax rate, where that fits in the world and the universe of things, and that we're all doing something to try to get a really extraordinary capital improvement in our city and others as well. So I don't know. That's just my two cents on the issue. I don't have an exact number, but that's my general sentiment. All right, we'll finish this tonight. Council's going to consider this next week, so I'm not sure we have to come to a conclusion right now, but.
I just, I was just going to say that I, you know, in the preliminary information you've presented, why, you've sort of been looking at a 3% is the sense that I have. And I was looking at that, and I was thinking about it, and the organic revenue growth, we're saying two and a half to three and a half, and we'll know more as we get closer to where we are. I think there could be some benefit to just aiming to keep that operational growth to 2.5% on the low end of the revenue growth. And if we do in fact actually feel confident that our revenue growth is higher, then that's just additional money that we can put into capital reserves for the long-term plan, which I think, you know, we just, I feel strongly that we need to be doing that now. We should have been doing it, you know, three years ago, but council didn't want to vote any extra pennies three years ago, so.
Any other comments? Mr. Snyder?
So I've listened to both, and I do think it's helpful to put a number in. But I also am not going to sacrifice equality of the schools in any way, and class size is a clear metric. So I don't know if we can draft some language on class size, but to me, that is a critical metric, and I don't want the class sizes to go up. So, you know, I don't know if there's a way to do that, say this is the target, which will force the schools, I think, I don't mean to put it that way, but will urge the schools to really focus on everything other than teachers if the overall number creates some hardship. So maybe I'm going back to the schools and asking you for some language here that will help us focus what this may mean in terms of the quality of the education. I want to maintain that, but I think, what I think we're all saying is, and I think we all are going to do our best, but we, the fact of the matter is, we have to draft something in language at this point. So I would ask you, how can we draft this with a number that allows you actually to work with the school community to understand that there are things that are not going to be funded the way they would like them to, but the fundamental core education quality is going to be maintained? Is there a way to do that? I'm just asking.
I, I'm confident that there's a way to write it. I don't know, I don't know that it's a great idea to put it out, is sort of my sense of it, just thinking about, and I understand and appreciate what you're trying to accomplish by bringing it up. I think the piece that I struggle with, just sort of on the spot here, is that there's so much more to a schooling experience than just the classroom experience with that, with that teacher. It really is sort of a multifaceted experience that goes from materials to classroom environment, to food services, to transportation, to, so I totally understand what you're saying. I just, I would be, I'm a little bit cautious about. saying, I just, I, I would be, I'm a little bit cautious about pitting one thing against another, and I, that's the other thing I want to try to avoid as best I can when I'm doing the school budget, too, is I don't want employee groups to feel pitted against each other, and, and for me, when 85% of the budget is in people, to maintain a class size, the only place I can maintain a class size with a budget cut is to cut other people. So then we've got teachers pointing at others, or others pointing at teachers, saying I was cut because of this guidance around class size. So I just think, I just think we need to be careful about how we, how we craft any, any language that goes into this, but, but I, you know, 2.5%, if that's the guidance, will require a significant cut in staff.
All right, is there anything else?
I was, I was just going to add to Dr. Noonan's comment about the, the, the language. I, I think we've, at least in my four years, and I know I'm out the door, but in my four years here, we've, we've always found, through the priorities that we, that we adopt, I think we found a way, whether it's a cut, which we've experienced, whether it's a little over what we've, what you've, you've provided in guidance, found a way to, to provide for the priorities within the budget based on the number. So, you know, I hear what Dave's saying, but I don't know that we need the language as much as we need the dollars, and then allow the school board to figure out how they, how they come up with their priorities within that budget, but anyway.
Yeah, if I could, I think that's, you know, where we're trying to go. We're obviously collaborating tonight, and we'll be collaborating every day for the next, you know, eight years very closely on all these facilities questions. To me, it's just a matter of time management. I mean, you know, in past years, we had the luxury, because the school was always over the hill, but not quite there, to really, you know, collaborate very aggressively for, you know, five months on the budget, just in terms of our bandwidth, you know, look at the effort that we're spending on, you know, 2%, 2.5%, 2.5%, 4%, you know, there's money there, but that's small money compared to the millions and tens of millions of dollars that are going to be at stake in the campus facility, depending on, you know, where we put the road that goes by the, I mean, we need to spend time on these big issues that have, you know, much bigger dollars attached to them than what we're arguing for in this budget year, and, and that's what motivates me to try to provide a number that we arrive at collaboratively, but still to provide a number, to do our job as city council people, because we are the taxing authority, we have to make the, the call ultimately, and, and to try to enable, I mean, Dr. Noonan, you've done a lot of budgets, you know, it's an expectations game to some degree, you know, if folks go into a budget year thinking, well, I don't know what I'm going to get, but, you know, maybe I'm going to get 5% or 4%, and it turns out that we can actually only manage 2%, 2.5%, then everybody's disappointed. If, if the expectation at the beginning of the year is, you know what, we are, you know, we were fighting it out over this facilities thing, we're working hard on that to do the best job we can, all of us, and, you know, we're just not going to be able to manage more than 2%, 2.25%, then people have that expectation before the holidays, and they carry it with them all the way through to the end, and if in the end, they get about that, then, and now, that doesn't speak to, I mean, I hope we don't have to cut actual positions. My experience here has never been that we've cut the schools at all. We've reduced the requested increase, but, you know, it, it goes back to the immediate post-recession years, when we actually had to cut the budget. So, I'm, again, trying to help council do something that would enable you to go to your people with the expectations that, that could be reasonably realized, or we could not do that, and we could be fighting it out here on the 24th of April like we've done in all past years. I mean, that is an option, and we could do that. I'd just prefer this time that we, that we not, because of the very important elephant in the room.
Mr. Z, did you have something you wanted to say?
I think the city manager's suggestion of 3% is, is reasonable and well-founded. I think we've all done a lot of belt tightening over the last couple of years, especially the city has. I'm looking at the deputy city manager slash HR director back, and so when we talk about additional belt tightening, I, I don't know what else we want to give her. I'm sure she's got lots of bandwidth, we prevented her from going to Richmond to do her thing that she loves doing, so, of course, we saved some hotel money there, too. I know I'm being a little silly here, but I think 3% is a reasonable number, we worked at that, that's the organic growth, that anything above that, you're going to have to beat me up to get it. I think starting at 2% is just pointless gamesmanship. 2.5, maybe, but 3 is what I heard, so, 3 we can achieve, we can live within our means, and, and something I think that the school population and the city can work toward. Thank you.
Other, other comments? We don't have to, I mean, we're going to talk about it next week, so, all right, unless there's any other comments, we're about halfway through our agenda as far as city council goes, so, you're welcome, anyone else is welcome to say anything they might have to say, but otherwise, why don't we carry this conversation on? All right, thank you all to our school board friends for sticking around with us. All right, let's get, get rolling.
Okay, so, council, we have a series of grant applications we would like for your consideration for endorsement next Monday night. We think they're really important strategically as to where we're moving as a city, and represent a really important opportunity. We want your input on it before we take it to you for your action next week. So, Mr. Stoddard, I believe you're going to give the presentation?
Yes, sir.
Thank you, sir.
All right. Thank you, city manager. Thank you, Mayor Charter, and members of council. Tonight, I have the privilege of presenting work from a much larger and very high-performing team. Before I even get started, their names are on the staff reports, but I want to call out really the hard work that Kerry Odenino, Jeff Sykes, and Gina Freiberg have been doing to assemble really this set of grant applications, and this is just one piece of the, the larger slate of, of grant applications that city staff works on throughout the application season. With that, I'll jump into the cover memo. It's titled "December 2017 Transportation Grants." This is, the reason for the cover memo, the attachments are the, the component staff reports, the reason for the cover memo is to, to put everything into context, that this is several grant applications going to three different sources, all of the applications have to be uploaded, the materials for them have to be uploaded in December, so the idea is to, to come before you as a work session item, get feedback and guidance in advance of several actions scheduled for next Monday's meeting on December 11. Summarized in the next section are the project recommendations that staff is putting forward. These things speak very well to the draft budget guidance in terms of being strategic, supporting the CIP, supporting multimodal transportation with an emphasis on walkability, and also supporting vibrancy in the commercial areas and reinvestment. The funding programs, there are three funding programs, the third is listed on the next page, but it's going out to the NVTA 70% program, the I-66 commuter choice program, and the RS, Regional Surface Transportation Program slash Congestion Mitigation and Air Quality Program. The applications are listed in summary in terms of the project titles and the cost estimates there in the table. There's more information in the staff reports, and I can step into those when we get there. Cost estimates, as you'll note, some of them are listed as a range, those things are still under review. Staff expects to have those finalized when they come to you for action. All of these applications, flip that around, none of these applications require a local match, and so, although the project costs may vary, none of the variance will have an impact on, on the local budget because there is no local match requirement. There are a couple of applications that are noted as being prepared by other organizations. It's on them to prepare their materials and submit them in December. City council will have until about the middle of January to, to provide a supporting resolution, so there is time to, to pause and reflect on those applications before submitting, at least the resolution. The rest of this memo is background information, which I just want to touch on. First is Schedule of Transportation CIP Projects. That's the first attachment, it's the color-coded sheet with the yellow and orange and green boxes, and what that shows is the adopted delivery schedule that was included in the FY 18 to, 18, 19, 20, 21, 22, 23 CIP. That is closely connected to the second attachment, which is the Slate of Grant Applications. The Slate of Grant Applications is something that city staff prepares and maintains throughout the year, and it is designed to deliver the funding that's needed to, to make that capital improvement program happen. There are several change, changes from the Slate of Grant Applications that was, that was previously presented to council, and those things are highlighted in the cover memo there, items one and two. One is taking strategic advantage of the NVTA 70% funds and aligning those closer to redevelopment in the joint campus area. That's the NVTA 70% application, and then the I-66 commuter choice applications, those were listed as to be determined several months earlier. Staff is now recommending two applications. The first would be to support transit service to connect the West Broad Street corridor to the East Falls Church Metro, service that used to exist, can restore that, and then the second is reconstruction of the intersection of Route 7 and Haycock. The next three sections are summary information about the different funding programs, both the constraints that are on them in terms of what kinds of things can be applied for, and in some cases, the, the opportunities there through all of them. It's the 70% funds, those funds are tied to the NVT, the Northern Virginia Transportation Authority's long-term plan, which is titled "Transaction." The table summarizes the projects that are in that plan in, that would benefit the city. I-66 commuter choice, which is funded out of toll revenues from the I-66 Inside the Beltway project, just started today, and then the criteria that go into that, and those are described, defined, those criteria are defined in a, in a memorandum of understanding that was jointly executed by the NVTC and the CTB, the Commonwealth Transportation Board. And then thirdly, our Regional Surface Transportation Program, RSTP, and Congestion Mitigation and Air Quality, CMAC, funds, that's a federal program that passes through the states and the NVTA down to the jurisdictions, and those are appointed, apportioned by a per capita formula. So that takes us through the cover memo and the first two attachments, the CIP schedule and the Slate of Grant Applications. The remaining attachments are the staff reports, and I do just want to touch on some of the, the critical information in them, I don't want to step through the whole thing, but I do want to highlight a couple of things. First is, let's see, I guess it's the first one labeled TR 1739, there are actually two labeled TR 1739, we'll get that cleared up before next week. The first is for investments in the North Washington Street Planning Opportunity area. This speaks to that budget guidance for reinvestment in the commercial areas. Note that these applications are being made this year, but the funding wouldn't be available until fiscal years '22 and '23. This is where the importance of the six-year CIP comes into play, that these funds have to be programmed in advance. If you flip to page four of that staff report, you will see a satellite view of the project area. It is the North Washington Street corridor in that Planning Opportunity area, so it starts at the city line near the firehouse, and then it goes down to Great Falls Street as it goes toward the center of the city, toward downtown. Couple of special marks at the intersections of West Jefferson Street and Gresham Place as particular focus areas for better pedestrian crossings. The second staff report, also labeled 1739, is for a application in support of the joint campus area. This would be, if approved, if awarded, the funding would become available in fiscal year '21. For reference, that is the same year that the city has already submitted an application for a better pedestrian crossing, perhaps a hawk signal across Haycock Road. The idea is to line up that funding around fiscal year '21, which is about the time the city would have a better idea of the redevelopment program at that 10 acres. On page three of that staff report is a sample graphic of what that program could entail with a special focus on multimodal transportation options, ped, bike, transit, as well as auto along Route 7 and Haycock Road, bringing along the city's streetscape standards and making sure that there are adequate and sufficient crossing spaces for, for example, left-in, left-out access for autos, but also crossing spaces for pedestrians and bicyclists. Next application is TR 1747, and this would be in support of the I-66 commuter choice funds, and there are actually two projects wrapped up in this one staff report. On page three is a graphic of the restored or the enhanced transit service that would connect the West Broad Street corridor to East Falls Church Metro. This would be structured as the resuming of the 3T service that previously ran from Tyson's Corner to the East Falls Church Metro, and this would be synchronized with the 28A service. 28A is an all-day service that runs 20-minute headways, so similarly, if this ran 20-minute headways, we could synchronize those and get effectively 10-minute service along at least that portion of the West Broad corridor where the two lines run. The second portion of the application, or the second application, sorry, would be the, what's labeled as multimodal access to the West Falls Church Metro Rail Station, and if you look at the page four, what's really entailed here is a reconstruction of the intersection of 7 and Haycock, that today, the lanes are very wide, the pedestrian crossings are not particularly well-designed, and the lighting is insufficient, and so, this would really be creating a more multimodal feel in that gateway intersection for the city, and then also completing design, although not construction because of the number of property owners involved, but design to get a better connection from the WNOD up to that Broad and Haycock signal. The expectation is that with the rest of the work going on and other grant applications, that eventually that would provide a ped-bike connection from the WNOD through the redevelopment area to the West Falls Church Metro. The last staff report, and this is really by form for the last several years, and that is the city's application for RSTP funds. It is a dual call for projects to both RSTP and CMAC. The city typically requests all of its funds come to it in RSTP form. The funds are distributed per capita for both programs, for ease of administration, and because the city has a relatively small pot in relation to the other jurisdictions in the region, the NVTA is willing to, to honor that request. The city requests its full share in RSTP funds. We always request a little bit more than we're entitled to, that protects us, should there be an upward increase in funds, we, the city is still able to get its full share.
Sounds good. All right, so questions, comments?
How many of these have you guys been successful in achieving on average?
I'm sorry, I missed the first part of the question.
How many of these applications, because they're competitive, are you guys successful in achieving, I mean, what's the percent likely rate?
We've been successful in recent years, especially with the competitive grants, so to the I-66 commuter choice program, we're one-for-one. In the last round, which was the first round, we won $500,000 for bike-share operating costs. For the NVTA, we have submitted, I think, a total of 1, 2, 3, 4, 5 applications, one was withdrawn because of a poor fit with the long-range plan, the other three were successful, and then the last one was successful in a different form, that we ended up with a, a different source of funds, but ultimately, the, the request was funded. For other competitive programs, Smart Scale, in the first round of application funding, the city had the number 1 and 3 performing projects for, for cost-effectiveness, and then in the second round, I think we fell a little bit to numbers 2 and 5 in the region.
All right, we'll go to student Eddie and then Dave.
Thanks. So just one, one general comment question, and then some specific ones. So all of this sounds generally good, it's all kind of important stuff that we've talked about before, but I have a hard time keeping track of it all, and I know that the way we're orienting the conversation is based on grants, and so we're talking about grants and what projects we're applying for, for those grants, but I think what would be helpful maybe, maybe in the council kind of off-site or planning meeting we have in January is actually talking about transportation and priorities as a whole, because this council in particular seems to care a lot about transportation needs, and so I think it's helpful to, maybe it's essentially this yellow version, but talk about relative priorities of these projects and making sure that we have the money to go after them, whether that's grants or, you know, operating dollars, but all the stuff that you talked about, Paul, sounds fine to me. Question about the reinstating kind of metro bus, is it better for us to put the money, if we get the grant money, towards reinstating the metro bus to connect West Falls and East Falls Church, or the private shuttle idea that the EDAs tossed around a bit? Like, could it be either option? Like, if we get the money, could we have the option of not going the route of using metro to do it and running it ourselves?
So if I understand the question, so first, I'm glad that, that the applications are being well-received, and then the question, if I understand, it was about the flexibility of the funds if they're awarded. The application process is competitive, and it's scored against a specific proposed scope of work, so if we want... So if we wanted to change the scope, now would be the time to do it. It sounds like the other option that the EDA has been discussing is sort of either a privately operated shuttle or a combining of shuttles from various operators within the city. Is that?
Yes. I think they understood that Hilton runs one, maybe it's one or two other mixed-use projects runs their own. And so the idea is, you know, could we get together in a public-private partnership where instead of them running separate shuttles, we all get together and do one and figure out a way to kind of let the public use it as well and not just residents of those buildings?
Yeah, that's been explored, I know, in a number of conversations. I think this may not be the only opportunity to go after in terms of private shuttles. I was just in a meeting today related to funds that might be available from I-66 outside the Beltway, and we might be able to do some outreach with something like an Uber pool, that if we can do some marketing around Uber pool and get them to start up service in the city, that might be a way to provide some connections that would be available as an on-call service.
I just didn't know whether we need to solve it now in terms of which way we want it to go, but whether if we get the money, could we just use it for connectivity between the two, whether it's metro, an Uber pool, a private shuttle, but some other mode?
I think to Mr. Stoddard's point, that if we apply for WAMADA, we'll have to do it for WAMADA or not accept the grant. I think with the I-66 commuter funding, if we want to be competitive, that would have to be a very fully fleshed-out program. This was responding to a citizen request when we lost the service when Fairfax County stopped funding 3T. And there would have to be some operational reliance and consistency that NVTC would look for. So I think we'd have to have a shuttle program much more fleshed out. I don't think this precludes supplementing or adjusting it, but it was addressing a very specific need to connect the two metros again. I do want to, I think the first point you did about having a more focused discussion on transportation will be great, and part of the CIP process and your orientation meeting, I think, could align that. I do want to acknowledge the work we've done to make sure that these applications we're going for are consistent with the adopted area plans and the comp plan chapter for mobility for all modes. So we're not going for grants that aren't consistent with overall policies, and then you get to the level of prioritizing and timing.
And then we recently supported, I think, an application for dual trails and the WNOD. Is that Nova Parks going for it, or are we going for that money?
Yep. So on the table, oh, I've lost track of my materials.
And if they're going for it, does it count against us if we're getting the money too?
So there are two applications that the Nova Parks is submitting. The first is, they've already submitted their Transportation Alternatives Program grant for the dual trails, and the city council did provide a resolution of support for that application. To be, to cover their bases in case they don't win the grant, Nova Parks is also applying for NVTA 70% funds. NVTA 70% funds, I think the question was, does it count against us or who's submitting the application?
Are we competing against ourselves, then?
I would say, in short, I would say no. That over the long term, each jurisdiction within NVTA is entitled to its fair share of long-term benefit. So over the long term, there may be an impact on the city, but I would say that it's a benefit that the city would be, I think, happy to have, given the adoption of the master plan. And I know I've heard a number of comments in support of that WNOD work.
And with the dual trails and something like this, the way the allocation is, is 50% of the cost would be attributable to the locality in which the dual trails are, and then you get a pro-rata share based on ridership, so not 100% of it would be against our long-term benefit, although it's also consistent with policy. Over a 10-year period, what's the dollar amount we're eligible for? It's 20?
Between 20 and 30 million dollars' worth of benefit. And I would be careful to use the word dollars, because it is in the state code, it talks about benefit, so it's not a dollar in, dollar out. But it is a level of benefit in terms of how many people are using the system.
And so we are nowhere near close, our maximum 10-year benefit that the City of Falls Church is eligible for, and because this is regional money, it's harder for some of our projects to fit into it, and we're not as big in terms of cost to deliver. So I don't think we're against ourself in the near term at all.
If Nova Parks wins using the TAP money, then it doesn't count against our 70%, but if they don't get that and then get the 70%, then that 70% does count against our share of what the 70% would be.
Yes.
Got it.
Yeah, 50% through the formula.
Last question. I know we talked about also bundling NTC requests and kind of getting transportation dollars to kind of go after those. Did we already do that, or is that part of this round?
Yes, that was one, I think, last year. There was a successful grant application for $600 for neighborhood traffic calming funds.
$600,000?
$600,000, yep.
You have to care and bother a problem.
I'm sorry. $600,000 for neighborhood traffic calming funds, and those funds are federalized, which takes longer to spend. The expectation going forward for NTC, Neighborhood Traffic Calming, that staff has been developing is that there would be every three years an application for $600,000. That level of funding over three years is consistent with the CACT's request, the Citizens' Advisory Committee on Transportation, their request for $200,000 annually. The idea for taking it and the funding in lumps is that it's more efficient to spend federal dollars that way.
So we don't need any more this round, because we already got it with the federal?
Correct.
Thank you. That's it.
Can I just ask a general question? With the change in the, in the, do we expect multimodal transportation?
Yeah, I think so. Considering what it would have been without that changeover. It's only comparative.
Yes. I mean, it's still, you know, it's still close to a tie, so you've got to shift over some majority. I'm hopeful, but not, too hopeful, I guess, yet. But I hope we can make some movement on the gas tax floor, because that would have the most dramatic impact on all of the multimodal and transit funding.
Yeah, and we should let folks know, how much does that mean to us if we got that floor back to a reasonable amount? You don't need to answer it tonight.
Yeah, I'll have to come back with you on that. I don't recall the exact.
So just a couple of quick comments. First of all, thank you. I think you're getting a sense of how much staff time it takes to get dollars out of this system that's been created over the last few years. So thank you for everything. Totally in sync with the, using these different funding sources for transportation to support the GMHS project and commercial development, but we, the thinking of that is, we don't want to spend a lot of money in the street grid or fixing Haycock and Route 7 if the commercial development is somehow totally different and wouldn't benefit from that. So I think that's great. I would follow up on Letty's comment about, is there any way we can make the 3T project a bit more generic so that we could add a private component to it? Because I think we're going to be back to creating a version of Georgia, I think, here without the negatives that, in terms of the two-long headways and things like that. And it would be good if we didn't, if we could find a way to be a little bit flexible so that we could add that private component to it. And then I think we could potentially have a very robust system. The next question I had was, is there any way to get after, like, new technology money, either for electric vehicles or autonomous vehicles? And I think your notion of thinking about Lyft or Uber is a very good one to consider in that, in that range. Two other generic questions. The funding of metro, you know, it's that big off-budget thing that nobody, you know, talks about, and yet we're spending a lot of money regionally on everything else but metro, and metro just hangs out there as underfunded. So I don't know. We can't deal with that right now, considering the structure of the funding, but I think that continues to be an issue. And finally, the Bus Rapid Transit program, which ultimately could replace what we're doing locally with a better system that actually serves the region. So any comments on that?
Sure. These are all very helpful in terms of guidance. So if I work from the, from the back to the front, BRT, one of the things about the 3T is that we're, at the staff level, we're working to structure this along the same route that eventually the BRT would follow. So that BRT, that alignment, Bus Rapid Transit would flow from Tyson's to the West Falls Church Metro, down West Broad, up North Washington to the East Falls Church Metro, then along Sycamore slash Roosevelt into Seven Corners and out to the Mark Center. So this 3T restores that link that was actually removed just a couple of years ago. The idea is to try and build a constituency for that kind of transit service, that kind of fixed timetable transit service. So there is a connection there. Funding for WAMADA, at the staff level, there have been a lot of conversations about what can be done to get the, to get WAMADA to begin preparing NVTA 70% applications. WAMADA, as a group, is restricted by some of the language around transaction and the use of the 70% funds, but I believe WAMADA staff has made some progress, and they have identified a handful of applications. Funding for autonomous vehicles, that's something we can certainly look at. I know, I saw the reference to mobility for all modes in the budget guidance, and one of the items in there is a future technologies report. That's an action item that's still on city staff to perform. And certainly, we could look at, especially with something like a TDM, Transportation Management Grant or Management Program Grant, we could, we could probably do some work about what's coming down the road. Syncing with redevelopment and the funds there, one of the strategies that city staff has been developing for all these grant applications is to focus on work at the perimeter of the site. So the Broad and Haycock intersection is always going to be at that loca, or in any foreseeable future, it's going to be at that location. So rebuilding it into a walkable multimodal element of the transportation grid is, I think, going to be fruitful. Similarly, the work proposed under the NVTA 70% application along Broad and Haycock focuses on the perimeter of the site. That leaves flexibility on what happens in the interior, and that idea of bringing the funds on in fiscal year '21 was done to align with the development planning.
But just if the proposal came where you had a linkage to the federal realty site, you might want to have spent that money at that intersection differently.
Sure.
So there's a, it's going to be really tough to, you're going to have to be really at the, you know, the cutting edge of what the commercial development is going to look like. Otherwise, we could spend money on an intersection and wish we had it to spend further up the road.
Sure.
So just, you know, thought there. And then finally, I think Letty's comment, which is really good, how do we, can we make this application for the 3T generic enough to be able to link it with other private sector needs? I think that's right on point.
Yeah, we can, we can take that back to the shop over the next couple of days and take a look at it.
Any other comments for us?
Yeah.
Do you guys do any coordination with Fairfax County for grants? I mean, just looking at the campus revitalization, like, if you're going to turn the page. Is there any collaboration to improve the chances of we get that money? Because some of this seems like a benefit, even though it's tucked up right against our site.
Yeah.
Improve your chances of getting the 10 to 15 dollars?
So we do meet with them. I think we have regular channels of communication. We met with them, we met with them at the staff level several months ago in a stakeholder group to talk about redevelopment and what it might look like. There's also a meeting scheduled at the staff level, actually, for this Wednesday to talk about work here at the campus site, as well as on the other end of the city around Seven Corners. So that is an opportunity to talk about sort of joint applications and supports.
I would imagine that would help our chances?
Yes. They control, Fairfax County controls very important votes on both the NVTC and the NVTA.
You don't say.
Yeah. And these are, 70% funds are regional, so they have to be a regional project, so there has to be a benefit, obviously, to our neighbors. And they have to be in the long-range plan, so it requires a lot of strong voices from the little city.
Sure, it's a lot of work.
Sorry, one more thing I thought of. That's okay. Sorry, now it's late. I heard that Tesla's interested in building more supercharging stations around, and I know that people actually seek them out, because you can essentially charge your car like four times as fast as you would with a normal charging station. And so they could go in, have a bite to eat, go see a movie, and then come back out and their car's charged. So they become destinations for people. I heard they were either offering them for free or doing some sort of grants for municipalities.
They're offering many of them free, and Kate Walker and Tim Stevens were meeting with Tesla this week to see about an opportunity for us. And I just passed on contact to her from Roanoke County that just got six Tesla charging stations for their new Explore Park, and they're trying to make it a destination. They have bike share there, downtown Roanoke, out to Park South. Hopefully, some good news, depending on the meeting.
It's not too late.
Oh, and one other thing on bike share. Do we have the ability, because there are now options to the fixed-station bike share, you already see them around Washington. Do we have the ability to either mix ours or to go with the purely smartphone systems? You know, you know what I'm talking about?
Yes, yeah. Yeah, yeah. Dogless bike share stations. So those are being piloted in the District of Columbia, as well as other cities in the U.S., and they've been operating for some time in other countries. I think the way that, the language of the grant, I could look at what the grant either limits it to or allows it. We could probably work around that if we wanted to run with a new system. Before we jump to any one solution, I would want to take a look at some of the benefits that bike share brings, that it does provide for a much cleaner streetscape, that the city does not have overly wide sidewalks, and if those bikes aren't controlled, they could end up becoming a bit of a nuisance.
On the other hand, one of the challenges is getting the space for the station.
Right.
So you don't have that, right?
Yes. And we've also been looking at it as, in some cases, the per-ride cost I've seen can be lower for the new systems. The flip side of that is that capital bike share is a regional system, so with the same membership, people can ride throughout every jurisdiction in the, in the region.
Maybe we end up with a mixed system where we?
And we may. It may be a great way to serve some areas that otherwise can't get service. It's, you know, Cardigo has been extremely successful in DC and Arlington, I think, because of its flexibility.
One thing just to consider going forward, the 10-acre site, having the, I guess, the minimum parking necessary is probably going to be very valuable to somebody, possibly us. In other words, someone does have to build a couple extra million dollars' worth of structured parking, that could be highly valuable, probably to us. So if you can kind of put that on your radar, if there's any kind of grants we could do about trying to optimize parking, it's sort of a perfect experiment in some ways, what you can get by with, because if somebody does $5 million less in parking, that's maybe $5 more million that we can get for the property and use for something else.
That's a, I think that's a good argument, and I think that that's an argument that has to percolate, I would say, up above the staff level a little bit, that at the staff level, we've been talking about, there seems to be support for funding park-and-ride lots when they're related to the origin of the trip, but there doesn't seem to be a similar level of support in regional plans for funding parking garages when they're at the end of the trip, so that you can have a park-once-and-walk experience. That somehow, everyone takes for granted that park-and-ride at the beginning reduces congestion, but even though there are studies that show traffic on city streets, 25 or 50% of it even, can be people just roaming around looking for parking. So I think that's, that's a message that needs to float up into policy documents.
So I guess my, I agree with you, but that really wasn't what I was getting at. Maybe if there are grants out there, like ULI or some other kind of, or something grants, to help us as a consultant try to figure out the optimal parking for a particular site?
Oh, sure.
I think that that's going to be really important, because that, you spend $100,000, maybe you save $5 million in parking, which is really a great return on investment. So just like we've got some grant money for, that'd be a great one.
So you're talking less about money for construction of garages and more about some outside expertise or an outside look on, on what do we need in terms of parking supply?
Well, you have to minimal, like, what, how can we get by and negate the minimum parking we require someone to have, and therefore hopefully maximize enough to pay for the land?
Absolutely.
Have a concurrent.
Can we, because a lot of this in the future is going to be technology-driven, I'm still very interested in getting a focus involving our citizens involved in that, so I'd like to work with you to put that together. Another example of that would be parking space apps now, that, you know, can we reduce or better use the parking that we have in our downtown area, and do we need to build as much? Could we free some up to make that, that street that we're talking about, you know, there behind the buildings? What city infrastructure would support that sort of app being used here?
Yeah, I think all of this is revolving around sort of managing the assets that you already have, and that's at the heart of smart growth, that if you've already paid for the infrastructure, use it. Don't, don't build something that's the same.
And maybe you could convert some of the asphalt parking spaces into more developable land, even in our downtown area.
Okay. Anything else on this topic, or should we move on to the next one?
All right, thank you.
Thank you. Thanks for sticking around.
Buzz about the first day of tolling on I-66 and the
Buzz about the first day of the toll on I-66 and the $34.
In the city?
$34.
I saw that.
There was some group that's already come out and said the whole thing needs to be trashed.
Celeste said it was $49.
Is there really any impact in terms of people cutting through the city? Is that what you're getting at?
That's fine. Annette said that everything was fine.
VDOT put out a press release from the morning, and they claimed that they had people observing the spillover traffic, and they claimed that there wasn't any change. Now, it'll be, I think the city does have an interest in making sure they're actually doing that. Yeah. But they made the point that that spike was for a very short period of time, but that spike has now gotten the...
The headline.
Yeah.
Good change in behavior. You're stuck at the whole point. Okay, as long as people aren't coming here tonight.
Well, we worked really hard to get the city's interests protected, but that deal was cut in Richmond fundamentally.
That's where your I-66 commuter choice money for shuttles and 3Ts coming from.
So, do we have that resolution for Phil? I mean, I know we have another I.
Yes, it should be in your packet.
It was on the table.
Thank you, Paul.
Hi, some hard copies if you need for the NVTC alternate for Mr. Duncan to cover.
I volunteered to attend a meeting of a group which I am not entitled to attend.
Before we get there, why don't we just bang out the City Hall thing?
This is like, I moved to adopt TR-17-50.
Second.
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Post, all right, that's done. All right.
Sorry, you can't.
That has to go through the legislature.
Was that properly noted that we were going to vote on something tonight?
I don't know.
Yeah, the city clerk noticed that or posted it. And I would note that the council always does have the right to amend its agenda and add items, but this was put out as a note.
What's the update on City Hall?
So, City Hall, let me give just a quick overview, and we would like councils, we want you to be aware of things that are going on and get a little bit of input. Our goal is to bring you a contract on next Monday for a $13 million project. And there are a couple of issues that we're working through right now. But first, just in terms of court operations, what the plan is currently for court operations beginning in January is to have court at Arlington County. And we explored several different options, and at the end of the day, the judges want us to hold court in Arlington County. We are going to meet with the sheriff next week to talk about what the cost of that will be. We've been spreading a message of this is a unified court system. We believe that this should be treated very fairly, and we are hopeful that we'll be able to control the costs on that. But the sheriff has signaled that she believes there will be cost to her in doing that, and she intends to bill us for it. So, there'll be more on that coming up soon.
Why don't you let me know? I mean, I can talk to Jay Fasad. I mean, I don't know why the hell we're paying a whole lot, seemed like the judges were driving this whole train anyway, forget for all this money we're about to spend. So, I hope it's not much, but if it's more than a small amount, let me know, and I'll talk to him.
Thank you.
Aren't the judges coming from Arlington to keep full of church, and now they get to say, "Oh, yeah"?
That's right.
I don't see how they...
Want to charge a whole bunch of money for that.
We're in agreement, but it's a discussion that needs to happen. Council meetings, we anticipate that your city clerk is the, sort of, the chief of arranging the council meetings and where they will be during the construction period, but we believe in January, for your first meeting, we'll be meeting at the community center. And we think that's the preferred option, but we'll work through all the details of that.
And she's working with FCC TV to make sure we can keep the transparency and all the AV piece going.
Right. So, the thing we want to engage with you on, and we'll just do it very briefly, we have a $13 million project. In our guaranteed maximum price negotiations, the initial prices came back from hit that were above that amount. We've gone through a very rigorous process of clarifications and corrections that have brought that price very close now to the $13 million. We're 100% committed to coming to you with a price that's below $13 million. There are three issues we want you to be aware of, of things that are on the table for potential cost reductions, for changes of scope. So, one is, we had envisioned that in the remodeled space, we would get rid of drop ceilings and we'd go to, up to the, basically to the slab for ceilings to give more air circulation and a kind of a more modern look. That is more expensive because of a whole host of reasons. So, one option is to go back to drop ceilings in the staff areas and other common areas. So, that's one potential change.
And part of that also would be the option, and we're costing out, keeping chambers in the lobby at the current plan of a more finished look than just the traditional drop ceiling, and it would be a two-by-two square, not the two-by-four outdated look.
One other issue is in council chambers itself. We took away from the meeting that we had with you and the architect, in terms of that treatment of the wall, which is currently the exterior wall, the takeaway from the council meeting was to leave that as exposed brick, brick in the windows, and then paint the brick. That's a, a lower-cost option would be to drywall that whole wall, and so you don't see the brick. And so, that's one that we want you to be aware of. We don't know how firm the council commitment was to having the exposed brick. I know that there was some diversity of opinion on it, but the takeaway was to go with the divert, exposed brick. We can save some money if that whole wall is drywalled, and then we just use that to be able to put artwork, portraiture, and other things on it as a drywalled wall. And then, the last thing is the green screen around the garage. That is a potential thing that's on the cutting. We would go back to that after it's built and see, you know, what we can do on landscaping or other coverages for it. But that's an item that we wanted to bring to your attention as a potential reduction. I don't recall what that dollar figure is.
About $190, $150 to $200,000. It could be added later, so it's one of the things that we could add. The garage would still have a nice finish. We still have the green roof and the plantings, but the screening right now is outside of budget.
Do you all have a four and five, so we can make prioritization trade-offs? Or is it only three?
Those are the three that we wanted to bring to your attention. There've been a whole lot of kind of smaller detailed things, and a lot of the way we've been getting the price down is through just clarifications of scope and sort of the normal thing that you do. But those are three things that have an aesthetic impact that we've...
We've done a lot of lighting and controlling and changing zones and a lot of the mechanical defining that still gets us to lead, but those are the three that are not easily achieved within the scope. Now, some of the walls, if you want to keep the brick, we have a hybrid in between where we just sheet rock the windows, and we just have to trade off the costs.
Well, I never liked the brick to begin with. It was just too cute. It's like how you would do a row house on Capitol Hill in 1972. So, those days are gone. On favor of drywall, I don't know exactly what you mean by drop ceiling. I assume that's, it would be just really expensive to make the piping and other kinds of things up there look pretty, so, you know, I kind of get that. So, it comes down to the green screen, which I kind of expected somewhere here, you guys are going to wash it off and not do that. And I would be opposed to that.
Are we over?
To have you say, to have you say we can do it later is the same as saying we're never going to do it. So, it's a non-starter for me.
We're about $200,000 over.
Why don't you just get rid of the garage? I don't like the garage, I got to tell you. First off, almost everything you've just said, the things you've mentioned, I don't care about the brick that much. I think the green, I think the garage does not look great. I'm not a big fan of the garage. The only thing it halfway saves it is the green, you know, wall or whatever you want to call it, the living wall. I would definitely go for that. I personally think the drop ceiling, getting rid of that and having the hip kind of unfinished look is quite nice, and I think employees would like that. It adds to the ceiling height, I imagine, by, I would think, a couple of feet, but I don't know. How much is that capitalized, you know, in terms of debt over 20 years? Like, what are we talking about? $200,000 is what, over 20 years? $22,000 a year more in debt service per year. In other words, if you spent $13.2, how much more does that cost you every year?
Well, we haven't been thinking about it that way. We've been thinking about it almost as a moral obligation to come in and not ask the council for any additional money for this project.
Appreciate that.
Well, you know, you wouldn't be any different than the school system that, you know, comes and asks us for more money after we already have spent money paying off the bond, so...
I hope this isn't, is this being recorded? We just undercut our negotiations? The $200,000 amortized over 20 years is about $15,000 a year, $15,000 to $18,000 a year.
So, let me add my two cents. Cindy and I had quite an exchange of emails on different options, and I hope that council has gotten those. Have you provided them to council? I think everyone needs to study up and look at it. I got to say, I'm not a fan of the way this project has evolved. I think we've ended up with a lot of interior work because we haven't done the glass-in part in the front. Means we've got to replace the city council chambers, and now I see what little aesthetic additions are now gone, but we'll still have the parking garage and exactly the square footage. So, I see certain constituencies winning, and I see others losing. So, I'm probably not going to vote for this project, but people can vote for it. I don't want to slow it down because we've got a security issue, but I just, I think we're spending a lot of money, and I think we're going to have, it's triggering the creation of a whole new city council chamber that I think is unnecessary. And we're going to add a parking garage, which I have issues with. So, I, but I wanted to engage in the exchange so that you all had it, and you may come out very differently, I wouldn't doubt it, but I continue to have real issues with the way this project has evolved. And now, we're here tonight that I think, as Dan said, I think the one thing that made that garage livable, because it's going to be an absolute sore thumb, taking up prime area of community activity, is, was that green screening, so...
What you got, Phil?
I feel like I got the same speech I gave earlier, you know, to the school people. I mean, I hear your pain, I feel your pain. I wanted to tear the whole building down. I think most of these problems flow from the fact that it's just not smart to redo an old building. But, you know, we didn't do that. We didn't have the votes for that, we didn't have the guts for it, call it whatever you will. You know, here we are, we got to get this thing started and get it finished, I think. I don't, I'd support doing the 13-2 and, you know, providing some aesthetic salve to the wound. And, you know, the ceilings sound like something that might be appealing to the staff and make for a healthier environment or whatever. I mean, I just, I hope that we're able to move forward on this before the end of the year. I mean, we talked about it since well before I got on, and that's been five and a half years ago, and, you know, Mr. Snyder probably can go back 10 years, but we just, we need to check this off the list and get on with it, I think. So, I'd be in favor of doing all three of those things, even if it's 13-2.
Just a request, all the information...
The things that we've done, we have a lot of conversations, and there's a lot of drop ceilings with the acoustics, the areas where people might gather that doesn't require more focus, if it's the kitchen or it's a common area, then you can, that sound and noise is something to consider. I don't know what the flooring is, is it carpet, right?
Yeah, it's carpet, and the center quarters are drop ceilings for all the conduits and the HVAC. And then, we did have acoustic tiles between the steel beams, so they had some acoustical attenuation, but...
The focus is going to be on the phone or maybe you have meetings. That sound, sort of, doesn't look as good.
What the architect has chosen to do.
Our architect said that, too.
Well, one of the things that we play is take out the acoustical, they were going to put dampeners in between. So, they thought was either take those out and just see how the noise works out, or...
Drop ceiling.
So, you have to have some kind of, I mean, you can't have hard surfaces.
Yeah, I think if we're not doing the drop ceiling, we need to have the acoustical panels.
All right, what else we got?
One comment. If we go with, I don't have a strong feeling about it either way, but if we don't have the exposed brick wall and you are hanging more art, can we please not just have old white men in our art in the court?
Absolutely.
I have that on my list.
So, our takeaway is, green screen is very important, council wants to keep that. Drywall in council chambers, okay. Raise the ceilings, we probably need to study that just a little bit more. Wrapping these negotiations up, we'll go a little bit of playing.
Meeting with them tomorrow.
All right, what else we got? Anything else? All right. How about other business? Any other business? Schedule?
Sorry?
I know it's late, but you said you had the mic on.
Thanks.
My suggestion for briefing, if that's a word, next Monday's meeting is to give ourselves some more time to consider the fiscal policies. Sort of reminds me of, you know, when we made the big decision about investing the water cell money in the pension funds, you know? We talked about it right up until, you know, we went to the ho, ho, ho parties, but we didn't actually vote on it until the new year because, I don't know, it just needed, there were more questions than we were able to answer. And I heard plenty of questions here tonight that I'd like to probe a little more deeply on them. I mean, I want this to be good, I want it to be something that will last and not something that council people, you know, six, eight years down the road will say, "What in the world are these people thinking?" Anyway, it's late, so that's my view.
Can I just say, though, that we did talk about these policies for almost a year, and then this is a different version of them, so I know we have not talked about this version for almost a year, but we've been talking about them for a while. And if we are going to bring a bond in May, the sooner we make, take a decision, and if the decision is that you vote against it, because you're not ready to vote, but we have enough votes to vote for it, I mean, it's still binding and we need to go forward. I mean, we really do need to think about that, because I think the timing on that is critical.
Well, if tonight's an indication, we're more than willing to sit until quarter of 12, so...
More than willing.
Well, we talked about the data for the implication...
Sorry.
I know it's late, but--
It is.
--you still have the mic on. Thanks.
My suggestion for briefening, if that's a word, next Monday's meeting is to give ourselves some more time to consider the fiscal policies. Sort of reminds me of, you know, when we made the big decision about investing the water cell money in the pension funds, you know? We talked about it right up until, you know, we went to the ho, ho, ho parties, but we didn't actually vote on it until the new year because, I don't know, it just needed, there were more questions than we were able to answer. And I heard plenty of questions here tonight that I'd like to probe a little more deeply on them. I mean, I want this to be good, I want it to be something that will last and not something that council people, you know, six, eight years down the road will say, what in the world are these people thinking? Anyway, it's late, so that's my view.
So I just, can I just say, though, that we did talk about these policies for almost a year, and then this is a different version of them, so I know we have not talked about this version for almost a year, but we've been talking about them for a while. And if we're going to bring a bond in May, the sooner we make, take a decision, and if the decision is that you vote against it because you're not ready to vote, but we have enough votes to vote for it, I mean, it's still binding and we need to go forward. I mean, we really do need to think about that, because I think the timing on that is critical.
Well, if tonight's an indication, we're more than willing to sit until quarter of 12, so--
I--
More than willing.
What we talked about, the data for the implications of the policies in the future years, do you think we'll have that data well before Monday?
Kiran is out tomorrow, so it would be Wednesday when we would get it to you. But we will send it out by email, so you can have it in advance.
Okay, anything else?
I do have one question. Is it the council's intent that on budget guidance, you'd like to see this come back to you with still just X percent growth, and then you will decide at the day as to what that will be? Or would you like this number? I don't mean to revisit the whole issue. I don't want to start that right now. But that was my takeaway from the discussion, that we're not filling in a number here and it'll come to you as an X.
It's fine. Look, we can figure out a number. I think we can, well, maybe we can't. But I don't know if you need to do that for us.
Okay, right.
We done this?
Hopefully.
Move adjourned.
All right.